Lights on. Hello, everybody. Happy Monday. Today is Monday, November 24th, 2025. We will call this 7:00 PM Cumberland Town Council meeting to order. Before we get started, we would like to note that tomorrow, November 25th, is a very, very important day. Tomorrow, November 25th, is our town manager's birthday. And right now, we would all like to invite you to sing along and sing happy birthday to Matt Sturgis. So get your, get your singing voices ready on the count of three. One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Matthew. Happy birthday to you.
And many more. All right.
Last year, we spent the evening together on my birthday. Thank you so much. Hope I'm not that red yet.
We know you're really disappointed not to be doing that this year. All right. First up on our agenda is the approval of minutes from the November 10th, 2025 meeting.
So moved, Madam Chair.
All right. Is, uh, is there a second? Okay, goes to Bob. All those in favor? And I'm an abstention because I was in absentia. All right. Next up, we have the manager's report.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Last month, sorry, two weeks ago, you may have realized I had a pretty extensive manager's report. So this evening, I promise to keep it brief. I just want to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving, and I hope that the season treats you all extremely well, and you have a healthy and prosperous holiday. And then the other item I have is, of course, we, uh, we'll be closed on Thursday this week. And then up to coming items we have, December 11th, we'll have a staff appreciation holiday party. We'll be closing at four o'clock that day. But I'll have more to report on December 8th. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Great. Is the tree lighting ceremony on Sunday?
Sunday.
Is that right? Okay, awesome.
Yep, tree is in place.
Yes, oh, we saw it. Ginormous, looks great. Okay, perfect. Um, next, we have public discussion. Public discussion is for comments on items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Rebuttal comments can be limited to two minutes. Public discussion topics may be brought up again under new business for further council discussion. Anyone here would like to come up and chat? Okay, um, I will close public discussion then, and we will move on to legislation and policy. So as part of legislation and policy, there is also an opportunity for public comment. Per Article 2, Section 7 of the Town Charter, there will be opportunity for public comment on each item on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Just so you all know, when you do come up, if you would just be kind enough to always give us your name and where you live for the public record. Uh, all right, so that gets us off to 25-119 to hold a public hearing to consider and act on a request for a credit enhancement agreement for Addison Capital, 275 US Route 1, to begin on July 1st, 2027, and to expire on June 30th, 2047. So Addison Capital is also known as Lucas Tree Company, which plans to move its entire operation from Portland to 275 US Route 1. The project is pretty exciting. It involves design, planning, development, acquisition and construction of new office space, necessary site work on the company's property map. And, thank you, Bob, um, we currently capture 100% of the real property within the district. Uh, we have our fantastic town attorney here this evening, um, as well as our birthday boy, to give us kind of an overview of some of the financials, what that credit enhancement agreement looks like. It's a little different from ones we've seen in the past, which is kind of cool. So Alyssa, Matt, who wants to take us through? All right.
You always want to start with the best starting pitcher, Madam Chair.
Can't argue that.
No, no pressure. Good evening. Thanks to see you all. I'll give a quick overview and then answer any questions that you may have. As the council chair indicated, this is a somewhat unique. Matt, did you want me to put, are you going to put those up? Okay. Credit enhancement agreement, just for brief context in terms of TIF District 1, as you all remember, but for, for those who may be interested, this district has been in place since 1996. So this district has, is very well established. And the council made the decision recently to extend that district under new legislation that, um, in main law, that allows municipalities to extend existing TIF districts for an additional 20 years, provided that the tax increment revenue, at least 75% of that, is used on either affordable housing and/or transit. So the council has already made that decision. The district has been extended and has been approved by ECD through 2047, which gives the town great opportunities to determine how to utilize the TIF revenue in this district for another 20 years. So there are two years left on the existing district, which you'll see on this chart, on the sort of original district term, which was a total of 30 years. That goes until 2027. The town currently captures 100% of the increased assessed value in this TIF district and has a list of designated eligible uses for the TIF revenue in the district for those two years. There's also an existing credit enhancement agreement on the property on which Lucas Tree will be relocating to. And so this action includes, and the council has already authorized, the assignment of the existing credit enhancement agreement to Lucas Tree on this property. This action would be a new credit enhancement agreement with different terms for the extended term of the district and for the new property, excuse me, for the new, for the new building. So beginning, as of the beginning of the extension, on July 1st of 2027, this new credit enhancement agreement would run the 20-year term of the extended district. And it would offer a reimbursement to the company that is based on a formula tied to their excise tax payments. So it's not a reimbursement of excise tax, it's a reimbursement of property tax that is captured in the TIF district. But it's a formula that's based on the excise tax revenue that the town will receive and benefit from. So what you see here on this chart is our projections of the tax revenue that the town can expect based on the estimated increase in value due to improvements that the company anticipates making on the property, calculated based on a projected mill rate. And so you'll see the tax revenue on the increased assessed value, as well as estimated excise tax payments made by the company. These are a conservative estimate based on most recent fiscal year data for the company's excise tax payments. And obviously, all of this is highly subject to change. It's difficult to forecast any of this into 20 years, so we've tried to be conservative with these estimates. The maximum credit enhancement agreement payment to the company is $50,000 in each year under this model. So what you see here is a calculation of a reimbursement of up to 100% of the property taxes that are paid by the company on the increased assessed value that's being captured in the district. And it is $5,000 for every $50,000 of excise tax that is paid, which is why you see the $50,000 reimbursement in the column titled CEA payments to the company. And then you'll see the tax revenue that the town retains, which is the balance of that, on the increased assessed value, plus the tax revenue on the base original assessed value, and the tax revenue received on the excise tax payments. That's the cumulative amount that the town will retain in terms of a, of a benefit that the town receives from the development and the various forms of tax associated with it. So that's sort of, that's, there's a lot of data there, and trying not to, you know, gloss over it too much, but I just want to kind of give the high level overview. And then I know that Town Manager has put together a couple of different charts that show this in a few different ways, which we can go over. And I'm happy to answer any questions and pause there before we dive into those.
Maybe for some of the folks at home and maybe folks who are here. Matt, could you just give an overview quickly of who Lucas Tree are and what excise taxes and what that kind of means for the future for, for this agreement, just to set the table a little bit?
Sure, sure, Madam Chair. And actually, we have Mr. Batson both, both here this evening and from Lucas Tree. And they can give us a much better description as to who Lucas Tree is better than I ever, ever will be able to, because they live it. But I can talk about a few things. We've had the opportunity to, to work with them over the past many months to get to this point. And trying to find this and employ this tool to make it attractive to them, to want to, you know, uproot from where they are now in their two locations to bring to town. A big portion of this is when you enter or look at a credit enhancement agreement, it's that both parties benefit. And in this case, it's, uh, you know, Lucas Tree will benefit from the reimbursement of property taxes based tied to that, almost like a 10-to-1 ratio, excise taxes to, to property taxes. So they'll benefit from that. Meanwhile, the town benefits from excise taxes significantly where, and I've got a slide that I'll show you here in a moment. But in many ways, it's a benefit to both persons, both entities. And that's a good thing to have, to have that in exchange for both parties. So it's a win-win, really, where oftentimes, you know, maybe just, uh, in order to attract the company to come to town, that they'll do a straight credit enhancement agreement just to bring them in. In this case, they're bringing great jobs to the town, as well as their whole operation, which is, you know, 100-plus-year-old company and with a great tradition. So we're excited about that. And we've had a great time working with Alyssa, Mr. Batson, as well as Phil Saucier, their counsel. Now, the difference between, now, looking at the credit enhancement agreement or the property tax revenues that are captured within the, within the TIF 1 district, those are, in a sense, captured. And we just, we've gone through that over the past few months to explore all those options. Excise taxes aren't captured, so those go towards the bottom line. And part of the challenge we had, you know, looking at it from the operations standpoint and looking at trying to find ways to not push everything towards property taxes to fund town operations, grow the pie, if you will. In this case, excise taxes are a great way to do it. And those are taxes that are paid on vehicles, trucks, cars, heavy equipment that, that is out there, anything that's registered under, with a plate to go over the road. And in this opportunity, because they'll be based here in Cumberland, they will register their vehicles here because they're all apportioned. So they'll run through, run through the town of Cumberland. So oftentimes, I just heard a gentleman today, he is, he is a bunch of rider trucks, and those are all registered in New Hampshire, because that's where, that they were operated out of. So in this case, we're taking advantage of the same benefit there. I have this little slide, and hopefully I can get it to work. But I think you might find this also helpful. Let's see. These, this is our 10-year, let's see, I want to, I want to scrap that one. I've got a better one. This kind of shows the, uh, this one here, yeah. This is that same slide, but just in a much better format, sorry. That's version 2.0. This shows our, our past 10 years' worth of excise tax revenue. So this goes back to fiscal year 16, when the town was receiving just under about $1.85 million. And you can see it's a steady increase, except for in fiscal year 20, which we all may remember that fondly, but it was the COVID year. And it was, you know, people did not, you know, because frankly, most towns were shut down up until the end of that fiscal year. It impacted, impacted your excise tax revenue, so you see a negative year for that. A big rebound in, in year, in '21. But that was kind of fool's gold, if you will, because you kind of picked up two years' worth of excise, really, in one year, or some of the growth that you lost in one got pulled in the second. And that kind of, as you can tell in '22, that kind of got back towards, back towards the water meeting its level. And then from there, it's been a consistent, you know, growth. Over this 10-year period, it, it really turns into about 4.7% annually, is what you're looking at. And this year as well, we're anticipating that it's going to track, you know, on that similar trend line that we've seen established. With Lucas Tree coming into town, and that's a one-year, you know, we go from basically 2.8 million to about $3.35 million in one year, about a 17% increase. So that's roughly about a four-plus-year amount of growth that would take place in revenue. To have that kind of growth take place, if you want to put it in perspective, let's see. This is pretty good. Actually, let me get to that one next. I've got one other one here, too, I think. Nope, sorry. Let's hit this one here. I think this is good. Cumberland Crossing, which is across the street, it's been a great, great development. There's 107 properties in there. That brings in about $916,000 in property taxes. In excise, then there's 80, let's say there's 87 cars that are registered in there. So that brings in about $26,000 in excise taxes annually. To put it in comparison, Lucas Tree is going to have about a $50,000 CEA, if everything works out to be great, while at the same time, we're receiving a $500,000 benefit. So by having one property come in, you're generating almost more than half of what basically 170-unit residential neighborhood's going to provide to it. Both of them are in a TIF, so the revenues are captured. But again, to try to do that, this is basically like adding a whole other neighborhood without the expenses that you'd have from that. So the town definitely looks at a huge benefit from that coming in. So that's, obviously, you can see the reason why we as staff were overly excited to do this and bring this forward to council. But also, it's, it's a great opportunity for both entities. So that's kind of why we have gone to this point to, to bring this, this evening. And then finally, the last one I have, if you want to look at, let's see the tax streams. I think that's it. Yeah, so this, this kind of gives you a picture as to what the overall combined total of all these different revenues do over, over the 20-year period of time. You'll see that the blue is the tax revenue that's captured on the, uh, actually, let's see, the purple is accumulated town benefits. So you're looking at roughly $775,000 here at the, at the final end here. The tax revenue on the initial assessed value of the, of the TIF is kind of starts here. And it stays pretty stable, but it slowly grows over that time period. As you can see, it's kind of more greenish here is, is that stripe there. And you can see that town still sees an incremental benefit over all those years, so there's additional growth that we capture. Meanwhile, the, the, the payments on the credit enhancement agreement payments to Lucas Tree for them coming into town is stable and consistent the whole way. So it's not as if it's, as if there's a gigantic, but it works. It works for them, and it works for us. And then finally, the tax captured on 100% of the revenue is pretty much that bottom, that bottom bracket there. And you can see that, that slowly tracks in a positive direction as well. But again, this, it's the big purple. It's the big purple one that really makes the difference to the taxpayers. And I think people will find that as a benefit over time versus putting more pressure on property taxes. At least this will help offset some of those other areas that generally have to get funded by property taxes. So that's kind of where, where we're at. I think that's the end of my slides, too.
Thank you, Matt. This is Counselor Douglas's favorite thing, new revenue streams.
Oh, my gosh, no, I love it.
Before we, does anyone have any questions for Alyssa or Matt? Yep, go for it.
Just for some background info, um, this deal as far as, or arrangement as far as reimbursement based on percentages of excise tax, is that a similar deal that they had in Falmouth? Is this something new for us? Like, is this typical? Like, can you just? I, I was at the TIF meeting. I know the answer. I would just like, you know, other people to hear basically what we talked about at that meeting and where this came from.
Yep, very much appreciated. Yes, that's, when, when we were speaking about it, they said, well, you know, this provides an opportunity for them to get all their operations under one roof. And it's basically the model that they were using in Falmouth. So, but for here, it, to have it all together, there's economies of scale that work by having your operations there with the location. But, excuse me, it's similarly structured, but it is new for here. But it's, but it's a perfectly, it's a perfectly clean, clean approach. And unique, actually. It's, it's, it's kind of exciting to see a different way to look at it versus the traditional model. So everybody benefits, both parties, too.
So two sort of nitty-gritty questions. Listen, I don't know if you have the, the CEA up in front of you, or I've just memorized it. In Section 5.1D, about halfway through that paragraph, I'm guessing that just there's a typo in there, but, um, it says something about, you know, "or relating to the company, or of or relating to all and substantially all of its property." It's just a weird phrasing in there. It's company or of or.
Yeah.
So I don't know, something which like, if, that of, the second or just shouldn't be there, or if there's something that's important that got deleted by accident.
I, I think it's an extra or and of there, so we can, I can take a look at it and clean it up.
Then at the bottom of that page, subsection F says, "Any discontinuance by company of compliance with the declaration of covenants and restrictions with main housing, which require the project maintain affordability requirements for a minimum, minimum of 45 years."
Does not apply.
Okay, I just wondered about where main housing came in.
It's, I think it's a holdover from another draft, so we'll take that out.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Really?
Yeah. A couple of questions, Alyssa. I'm not sure if this is you or Matt. So just looking at these projections, the FY '26, we won't see any estimated excise tax. Is that correct?
That's, that's my understanding. I don't know if you want to, in terms of the timing of the relocation.
Correct.
Counselor Douglas, great question, and I'm glad you asked it, because we look at the two years, it's the original district.
Yeah.
And so there, that's a, this does not become live, in a sense, until year one, which would be FY '27. So at that point, that's when the terms of the, let's say, the excise for property tax relief would be
So at that point, that's when the terms of the, let's say, the excise for property tax relief would begin.
So that's, so it'd be basically two years out.
Two years out, so we wouldn't receive any excise tax until FY '27?
If they come here before then, it would be essentially a bonus to us in between. But the original deal would still be in place up until that point. You notice that the CEA payments of the first two lines are at the $28,000 amount, so that's part of the original TIF. And then this would take effect in year one of the extension.
Okay, and then, just for educational purposes, because I am not certain of the answer to this, but there is no anticipated growth on that excise tax number, correct? So like, we wouldn't see an anticipated annual type of increase, or isn't an anticipated depreciation based on value? Are you following what I'm kind of saying?
Yeah, you may see changes. We didn't want to, I guess, for cases of the forecasting, we wanted to
Be modest.
Be modest, yeah, because equipment's going to get more expensive, and registrations will, you know, anybody who bought a car 10 years ago and registered it brand-new versus buying a new vehicle today, that's all based on the original value of the vehicle, and, you know, as equipment's replaced and it's more expensive, I think naturally you'll see that number increase, but we didn't want to do that, except we knew the known entity now was roughly around $500,000 in annual excise, so we felt that was secure in making that, using that for our forward-going forecasts.
Okay, and one other thing to flag, I think I see, so you see the step back in the mill rate, so I'm anticipating that's the revow, right? So I don't know if it's worth flagging in here, any other anticipated, like, kind of reset of the mill rate? Based, you know, are you following here? Because it's always just an increase here, and I would anticipate that we would step back the mill rate probably in another two to three years again, based on Cliff, what Cliff Wood said last time he was here, or Clint had said. I don't know if that's worth reflecting that, but just something to flag.
I think they should track equally, just as, because value will also increase during that time period as well. You know, the mill rate doesn't stand alone as an entity, because the values also would be going upward at the same time as the mill rate would be staying stable, because you'd be doing, you know, routine annual or biannual revaluations to increase, or bring the properties up to market value.
Okay.
So I think that should fairly track cleanly.
So it's essentially just like looking at it as a parallel, and understanding that we probably would do a revow, but this would still pace at the same increase, okay?
That's what we anticipate.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Maybe we'll do our public hearing and then move into council discussion, unless anyone has any, do you have, yeah, Bob, go for it.
A couple of questions. If, in the TIF district, the tax increment is based on the property, not necessarily the owner, is that correct? Or is there a reset every time there is a new owner?
That would, it would travel with the property, much like the current, like, there'd be the ability to transfer that, like there was recently with the CEA that we had, the council had for action two weeks ago. It may apply to one entity, but it might not be applicable to another. So it would just depend, so one, like, in this case, under the terms of the agreement, Lucas Tree can take advantage of the terms of the deal, so to speak, versus if, let's say, Norton Insurance decided that they wanted to come back, and they wanted, and they bought the space and moved back in, but they didn't have excise, then they'd either probably come to us and ask to amend the credit enhancement agreement to something that would work, although they'd still be up against the clock, so to speak, because the extension's only for 20 years, and we had that ability to do it. So if it was at year 10 and they came in, then we'd have to recalibrate. But if it was someone else who had a similar situation, or let's say, like, the world's largest tree service came in and bought Lucas Tree from them, and they wanted to take advantage of that, then it would just be a question of assigning the terms of the CEA over to them.
So in the event of Ocean View getting sold to somebody else, the existing TIF language would remain in effect, it would not be a restart?
Yep, yep.
If I may just add to that, so the value, as you said, remains the same with respect to the property regardless of owner. So in terms of the capture, the original, that is established as part of the district, no matter who owns the property. And the assignment, to the extent that that were to be requested, or you were to consider that, is subject to review and consent by the council as part of the CEA. So that would come back to you, to the extent that that were, you know, even something that the parties were considering.
So we use the word omnibus here, which is not a common term or not something. Could you just explain that a little bit to what that omnibus district is in general terms?
Sure, it's a term that's utilized by primarily DECD in designating these districts. It's not necessarily identified in the statute, but something that we identify applications for TIF districts as, so that DECD, when reviewing the application for the TIF district, knows whether the town has reserved the authority to enter into credit enhancement agreements, which is essentially what the omnibus designates or reflects. The TIF District 1 has been an omnibus district. The council, when it originally designated the district, reserved the discretion to offer and enter into credit enhancement agreements, subject to just a public hearing and a vote, rather than having to amend the district every time. So as an alternative, if we didn't designate it that way, the district would need to go through the formal amendment process to authorize a credit enhancement agreement. So this provides some latitude for the council and discretion going forward. If there's a credit enhancement agreement you want to consider with respect to a property in the district, you have the ability to hold a hearing, just like you're doing tonight, and vote on that without having to go through the formal DECD amendment process.
My third question is, in the old days, we used to lie about the value of our automobiles or our trucks, and the state finally wise up to the fact that we had to have a little balance in that. So we pay our excise tax based on MSRP, and as a percentage thereof. Who sets that percentage, and does the state change it very often, or is it stayed relatively stable?
It's been relatively stable, but the state does set it. And there's always a bill that comes in to the legislature to try to play around with it, but that's a good day to go up and watch the public hearing on it. But ultimately, yeah, the state, we just operate by the state side of it.
Andrew?
So I think this is great at all, and so my next question is not to sort of burn on anybody's parade with this, but what will the impact of this many more trucks, realizing that their whole fleet isn't going to be based in Cumberland now? You know, their fleet, it's all over the place and all. But it will be more trucks on Route 1, and, you know, the usage of that, is that going to do anything? Or is that sort of, Route 1 is designed well enough that that's just normal wear and tear, and we're good, and the, you know, trucks coming in and out is fine because of, you know, the design of that road is going to be great with speed and all that?
I think we should be fine. Yeah, first, it is a state road as well, it's not in the urban compact up there, so we don't own that. But it has been, you know, Route 1 is constructed to be able to handle that type of weight and traffic as well. So I think we should be good to go.
And if I may add to that, which was whispered in my ear so eloquently, the planning board will obviously conduct a review with respect to the use of the property and the site plan, so any traffic impact will be addressed at that point, to the extent that there is any.
Is there, this is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public, maybe anyone from the Batson family, that would, no pressure, but would want to come up and comment on this agenda item?
Hi, my name is Arthur Batson, Jr. So this is a great opportunity for us, because we have operations in Portland and in Cumberland. Going back a little bit in time, everything used to be in Portland, but we, our corporate headquarters, we built and separated our purchasing and receiving, stayed in Portland, and our corporate headquarters went to Falmouth. This has given us an opportunity to bring both of those entities back together in one place. And so we see it as a real benefit for us. The trucks that, I wouldn't worry too much about Route 1, really, but the only trucks that are going to be there are our new trucks that come in, that we have to outfit and equip, and then put off to wherever they're operating. Because we operate in Maine all the way through to Georgia and Florida, up and down the East Coast. So the truck impact will be minimal. They're basically, if a truck's going to get traded in or sold to auction, then it'll come, sit for a week or two, and then go to auction. New trucks come in, we outfit them, and then we will send them to their final destination for the cruise. So, you know, I think it's a good opportunity, excise tax, we've estimated it, it's presently at half a million. It'll probably grow, it's been growing every year. And so it's a real benefit for the town, but a great benefit for us, because it's an exchange of kind of a 10-to-1 ratio, so. Any other questions?
Go for it, Denise.
In our packet and at our TIF committee meeting, the proposal had mentioned bringing jobs to Cumberland. Do you foresee an expansion? How many jobs do you think you'll be looking at? Is there like, is that just like a general statement, when you kind of put this thing together? Or do, you know, do you put on
Yeah, I mean, we're continuing to grow. The, next year will be our 100th year as a company.
Congrats.
And we've, you know, we've been growing at about 10% every year. So that use more jobs, larger corporate office, larger receiving and distribution area for supplying the crews, because we supply all our crews out of here. UPS will come in each day, whatever the crews need gets packed up, gets sent to them, whether they need new pruners or first aid kits or whatever is needed for them. So yeah, you know, we see, you know, gradual increase, especially in office staff. You know, COVID changed some things, where more people work at home, but we have kind of a hybrid model. Most people work three to four days in the office, and maybe a day or two out, depending on what their schedule is, but yeah.
Other questions? Jeff?
I'm good.
You're good, okay. Thank you. Congratulations on 100 years.
Yeah, that's amazing.
That's awesome. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to comment on this agenda item?
All right, we will close the public hearing, any council discussion?
Mike?
I just want to welcome you to Cumberland. This is a win-win for us, win-win for you. Your company has a great reputation. I've talked to people from CMP and other people that have contracted with the company, especially in bad storms and stuff. And you guys, you pay fair wages, you do good work, and you're reliable, so welcome to Cumberland.
I guess just for me, from my business mindset, I just think this makes sense all the way around. I think it's good for the town, I think it's good for Lucas Tree, and I think we need to move forward.
Yeah, I would welcome you also to the town. And as Matt's pointed out, this has been a vacant property for a couple of years. It's, we've talked about, you know, bringing commercial developments to town, and, you know, there's plenty of, you know, distractions and reasons not to, you know, bring this forward, but I think that, you know, you do the math, at the end of the day, this is a benefit for all around, so I too extend my welcome to Lucas Tree to Cumberland.
I was just going to say, I agree, I'm in complete full support. I mean, how amazing to have a company that's so well-established. I know that we've struggled with kind of maintaining some newer businesses over the years, and this company has a really longstanding history and a large span of employment, and I think it's an incredible opportunity for us. So I would be in full support, and would offer a motion whenever we're ready.
Sure.
Madam Chair, if I may, I just want to take a moment to thank our fantastic attorney, Alyssa Tibbiss, for her work on this, and I also want to notice our fine town planner, Bridget Perry, as well, for her help on getting us to this point as well, so, thank you. We have a great team, and we're just really excited and looking forward to the next 100 years with Lucas Tree in Cumberland.
Long past us, Matt.
I just, kind of on top of that, I really love omnibus, but taking, kind of rather than just rubber-stamping a credit enhancement agreement, looking at the organization and figuring out, or not just using the boilerplate thing that we've always done. I think that that's really smart, and I applaud you all for doing it, and thank you, and it's, I think this is going to be fantastic for us. I hope, obviously, that when we have our first storms, we have Lucas Tree's first rate of refusal to fix all the lines that are down. But that's probably illegal, so I won't say it out loud.
Best chance.
Moving right along.
Moving along, if there was a motion, I'd take one.
I give you a motion, let's hear it. I move to approve the credit enhancement agreement for Addison Capital, 275 U.S. Route 1, to begin July 1st, 2027, and to expire on June 30th, 2047.
I'll give you a second.
All right, is there any discussion on the motion?
Can I ask one question?
Please.
Where did Addison Capital come from? What's the name? I'm just curious. Because I'm nosy.
There is a little history with it. My family, the Batson family, originated from Addison, Maine, in the early 1600s. So that's where we did that to, Addison Capital LLC owns all of the properties that we own. Lucas Tree owns.
Thank you.
Awesome, lovely, yeah. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Unanimous, Brenda, congratulations, welcome to Cumberland, we're so happy to have you. All right, next up, we have 25-120, "To Consider and Act on Accepting Vining Way as a Town Road." Okay. So I think, so just for folks at home, the road's located within the Christmas Creek subdivision. I know that there's been just kind of a little bit of chit-chat happening around. Counselor Maholic, did you have something that you wanted to kind of tee up as it relates to this project?
Sure, absolutely. So, you know, just so the members of the public are aware, when we get these packets, we do actually read these and do a lot of homework with them, and, you know, this would be an example of it. And, you know, Vining Way is an excellent-looking neighborhood, some real nice homes down in there. And, you know, we received some excellent emails from the citizens that live there. And, you know, I can understand, you know, you folks that live there, looking and wanting for the road to be accepted. I mean, you have great homes, and you live in a great town, and if I lived there myself, I'd have the same feelings. You know, these citizens shouldn't be faced for another winter with the cost of plowing that road. However, accepting this road puts 100% of the liability on the town from here, and I have concerns of that. If you start with looking at Seavieh and Mahar's report, the subject is detention pond inspection for Castle Rock Drive, Castle Rock subdivision. I can cut and paste to the best of them, but I'm not putting stuff in a public record. So that caused me to really question, you know, some of this report. I'm not a civil engineer, but stuff like that concerns me. It does refer to Vining Way in the, later in the document. My concerns are really around stations 7 to 10, which is where the guard rail is. And based on the plans, it appears to be a one-to-one slope. So I want to talk a little bit about that, and I did not design this road, but I've spent probably the last 15 years of my life seeing And I did not design this road, but I've spent probably the last 15 years of my life seeing roads be constructed anywhere from 128 in Massachusetts all the way to a little dirt road. So, I've seen a little bit of this stuff and can read some plans pretty well. To me, what happened is when the developer designed this road, they looked at sewer system. And, you know, if you look at Ocean View, you can only disturb so much of the wetlands from widthwise. So when you look at where station seven to 10 is and the taper of the slope, the reason you have a one-to-one slope is you're restricted to how much of the wetlands you can disturb. And because of that, that's why you have such a steep slope. Because if you look at, say, Ocean View, they have sewer pumping stations because they drop the elevation down to force the sewer back up. This has no sewer pumping stations, a gravity-fed system, but it causes you to maintain an elevation all the way down to Tuttle Road. So, that's why the road was built that way, and that's just my opinion. But where my concerns come from, going back to this report, is CV and Mahar does recommend monitoring that section for stability and potential settlement for a minimum of one year after, after plowing. So that's where my concern comes from. The road was repaved, repairs were made in June. We've had very little rain since June. I did visit the site on Sunday, and based on that, there's some evidence of erosion. So I guess where my thoughts are with this is, you know, I recommend the following. The town of Cumberland plows and sweeps the road. We monitor station seven to 10 for erosion and settlement, and we accept the road at a later period of time. I know we have some additional engineering work that's going to be done that probably give us a better chance of what that period of time is. You know, and I guess I also understand there's a recreational easement in place that would benefit Twin Brooks and that would be great. But I don't think we want to rush this to obtain that easement. I just want everyone in the public to know where my logic is with this. And my logic is to minimize the risk to the town as a whole, to every citizen, in the areas of station seven through 10. This attempt is to minimize the risk of, and protect all citizens in this town, in the town from any liability, any potential issues that could occur in that area. You know, if, if we had a substantial major rainstorm, I can't predict what's going to happen. I don't know what hap, could happen. I'm not a, I'm not a civil engineer, I'm not a structural engineer. But I do know this much, if there's a major failure, it's going to be very expensive to fix. We're not talking about $50,000. We could be talking more above what the performance bond is. So that being said, that's where my statements come from after reading this packet and, and taking a look at the area of the guard rail over the weekend. So, thank you.
Did you have anything on, Councilor Reel?
I guess I'll pick up on that. I too made a, a trip down there and I won't say that I'm alarmed, but the, the one-to-one slope is very concerning. It, it reminds me of the knife edge up on Cataden, if, if nothing else. It's, you know, it's, it's a very narrow piece of asphalt and a long run down to the bottom of the culvert there. I'm going to guess it's an elevation rise of, oh, maybe 70 feet. I wouldn't be uncomfortable with a one-to-one slope if I was having an elevation change of 10 feet or something like that. But with the extreme rise there, it would certainly have made far more sense to me if there had been a slope in that, you know, taking down and then coming back up, and it would minimize that. So I, today I called the Maine Department of Transportation. I spoke with the Region One District Engineer and I asked him about, you know, some just general questions about road construction and who, who can design a road and who can inspect a road. And, you know, the insurance was, well, you, you have to be a civil engineer and, you know, to inspect it, you also have to be a civil engineer. And I don't pretend to be a civil engineer. But I do have enough questions that I think that I want the, you know, the reviewing engineer, CV Mahar, to come in here. Because there is nothing in our packet that describes to me what that fill is, where the, where the utilities are laid through there. And I think that, you know, until I have that, you know, in head and I have a little bit better comfort that, you know, that's, you know, it's not all clay that was filled and then a skim coat of riprap on either side. I'm, I'm sure it's not, but I, I want to see the insurances, I want to see the inspection reports. And so I would, at the very minimal table this tonight. I'm certainly in agreement with Jeff that we can, we can plow and sweep it, but before we accept that, because again, as Jeff's pointed out, any, any failure here is not going to be a minimal, you know, amount of money. It's going to be a large amount of money. And, and then, you know, as a, as a general statement, I have said for, for years, I'm uncomfortable with accepting roads as public ways, particularly when there is no benefit. Dead-end roads don't benefit the public. And yes, we understand that there is a unstated agreement that if you build something to town standards, the town hasn't passed, accepted it as, as a public right-of-way. And we've talked about this in the past, about having a workshop of some sort to discuss this issue. And, and this is, this is why I think that the, the, the conversation has to happen. Because it's, I can think of no other example in the town of such steep slopes over such a rise in elevation. And so I have, I have concerns about it and I think a review with CV Mahar is in order.
Can I say something? Very insightful, Bob and Jeff. I don't know a lot about this type of stuff, so it's helpful to hear your, to hear your thoughts on it. I would, Jeff, I can't remember when you were just speaking, if you suggested, is there a way that we could give like a potential? I forget what the, the word is called, but when you essentially allow for, will plow, did you suggest that, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay.
Basically, there'd be like a public easement granted by, by there. And then that would allow the town to plow and sweep the road and take care of that, so the citizens aren't burdened with that bill.
There's one in place at the moment.
Okay.
As well.
There is one in place, okay. I just want to make sure.
That was our concern last, last year, for, basically for the school buses to be able to get up there and do that. So we would fall into that same area, at least until, you know, until the town, you know, works towards acceptance of the, of the road.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure they're covered, knowing we're probably a week away from snow, so.
Madam Chair, just to, the staff was out there today. Our Public Works crew was out there today staking the road to make sure that, and it's our full intent is to plow right now and to do winter maintenance, just to get, because that's, I mean, we're, we are coming into that concern.
Yeah.
And the way this weather pattern seems to be shaping up, that's our intent, is to go forward with that right now because everybody's worried about that.
Okay.
And we want to make sure that that's our staff's intent going forward.
Bob and then Denise.
I just want to say one other thing. The plan, excuse me, the planning board has a set of road standards. You know, and I'm not suggesting that the planning board didn't do due diligence when they approved the subdivision. And I, I'm not drawing that into question, but I am drawing into question is the actual construction. So it's not, you know, maybe the road standards do need to be changed. I did have a conversation with the Assistant Town Manager, who's also in charge of Public Works. And, and so he did tell me that he was out there a number of times, you know, observing and seeing what was being built and constructed too. So I think there's just enough of, enough questions to, to ask for the review.
Madam Chair, if it would be helpful to the council, one thought would be perhaps to have a workshop before next council meeting, to have CV Mahar come in, as well as the, you know, Tom Perkins or the engineering firm that also helped design it and get it across the finish line, to come in and talk about the construction that was done, you know, answer questions that may be related to the slope, materials that were used for fill, the inspections that have taken place all throughout the whole construction process, as well as, you know, any outstanding items that, that have been completed. Then just get it all on the council, so the council's more comfortable in understanding on this one as far as making this informed decision regarding acceptance. I know we can get that all lined up.
Matt, I think that'd be helpful. I'd just, you know, going into that, I'd really like to see compaction tests for station seven to 10. You know, inspection of the fill, what was used, where it came from. But those are the, those are the highlights that I really want to see. And I'm sure the engineers have some daily reports and stuff from that, especially in that area. But that's, that's the area that concerns me. If, if station seven to 10 wasn't a one-to-one slope, if it was three-to-one, I'd say right now, let's just pass this and accept it and push it forward.
One thing, Denise, and then I'll loop back around to you. And just to Bob's point about, we did discuss putting a workshop on the agenda. And I was gangbusters to do that for our first meeting in February. Until, I think, Matt, you said we have some existing ordinance language around public roads?
Yeah, the, the town does have a, I mean, there's a whole street acceptance ordinance that the town has regarding if it's, or, or road standards. It shows, you know, if you want it to be a public, you know, a town road, so to speak, the standards by which it needs to be, you know, constructed as well as the acceptance procedures that take place there, all the, you know, basically all the boxes that need to be checked. So that all exists currently. So that's pretty much what the town has followed. And developers make that decision when they're, where they're doing it. Because it's, you know, that's obviously significantly less expensive to build a private road because, you know, there's less material than, they're not as wide. And there's other standards that are there, but it's less expensive in some, for some neighborhoods that works. And others where the, you know, the developer may invest a significant amount in the infrastructure, knowing that the residents who purchase their homes in there are anticipating, you know, future acceptance because they, A, want to, you know, they like being on a public road and B, want, it gives them peace of mind, knowing it, similar to Vining Way, sorry, to Mineral Springs where that went in, is going in, you know, right now on the west side with 72 lot subdivision that's in there. That's, that's currently being constructed at a, at a public road standard as well. So it oftentimes just depends and that it may be on the market that they're also looking to capture. So, you know, if you've got a six-lot subdivision going in, private road standard may work out great. You've got a 40-lot subdivision going in, town road is really where you want to find that because it, for, you know, basic economics, I guess, in a lot of ways, so.
So maybe.
We can have that as well for next, for the next meeting.
Yeah, and we can maybe talk a little bit during new business as to whether or not it, that's something procedurally that, you know, we want to, you want to talk about at the ordinance level and then bring it to council? Or if we want to have a full council workshop on it, open to whatever? But if it, if we're finding that we want to review that ordinance and maybe spruce it up a little bit, we can talk a little more during new business, if that works for everybody, about how we want to move that forward. Denise, and then back to Bailey.
Just, yes, I agree that we should table this for now. Plow would be great, but accepting this road, I mean, I'm looking at the CV Mahar June photos of erosion and pavement failure, where Jeff mentioned, seven through 10, and then Jeff's photos yesterday, which, thank you, by the way, for going out there, both of you, and taking a look at it yourselves. But we have the same type of failure beginning again, not even six months later, in the inner and outer areas of where the guard rails are put into place. So it's, and, and most of the cracks also were just covered by rocks. And then there's also just erosion of whatever grade of rocks these are. Like, it looks like five to 10 feet of just like slippage down the hill. So it's not in a state where I think that the town needs to take that on until it is stable for a reasonable amount of time, as you would expect with a new road. So, yes, I agree with everything you guys are saying.
Bailey?
This might be an open-ended question, but just looking at some of these photos, are curbs not a requirement when building new roads? It's just in like higher traffic corner, like corner areas?
It would depend upon the design of the road and what's required. You, you're talking about like, like Cape Cod-style curb or what have you that you have for granite curbing?
Looking at some of these images, it's a curious thing that the asphalt runs right to the edge, right? And then you see the deterioration of it, and then it extends and, you know, that's where the deterioration begins. And then even on, along some of those property lines, it just doesn't seem like, seem like there's any like preventative measures really taken to, even for the homeowner, like I would be kind of frustrated by that, like, lack of kind of management of long-term planning for that. But I'm just curious what the, what the, I can look into that. It was just a off-the-cuff question.
And I think many of the questions can, can also be addressed, you know, with the engineers here in place. I know there was one side that there was concern on, let's say on station, as Council Mahalik says, station seven to 10, that was worked on this summer with replacement of bollards, and that was where the concern was. There's another side that has been fine. It looks as though the, the pavement may have pulled back from that some, but that's, it's not due to, due to it failing. So I think it may be, there may be a good opportunity to have the folks who actually have done the inspections, as well as have done all that work leading up to this point, to come in and answer those questions directly. Because they've got the three letters after their name that qualify them to talk about it. And then I know on some of the, some of the roadside areas, a lot of it's related to stormwater management, the sheeting that needs to take place with the road may be crowned, to set up to direct stormwater to go in a specific direction. And then there were some areas that were, that were seeded and, and loomed not too long ago. So it's been a tough time to grow some grass as well. So they can, they can talk about some of that as well. Some of that might be part of it designed and may also be the fact that grass may not have, they have caught yet to.
I just have one other comment.
Go for it.
You know, just for the folks who live there, you know, I sympathize with you. I mean, you, you bought a really nice home and, you know, you're stuck between a place of us and a developer. And I just wanted to tell you that my thought process and my logic and my comments tonight did not just come from a whim. I put a lot of thought into this and it's really because I care about everyone in this town. And that's what's driving it. So I, I know it's not easy to hear, but I just, I do want you to realize that I do sympathize with you for the place that you're in. So that's, that's all I have.
Madam Chair, I just got a text from Chris as well, just as far as the curbing. The curbing, Council Douglas, is oftentimes used to direct stormwater to go into catch basins. And, and this.
Not far off.
No, 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 and then, because there are ditches.
Basically an architect, you know?
Yes, so it is for, it is to capture the water in the ditches that are, are all through there for, for managing that. So there's two different ways to, to, to capture it, so.
Okay. That's curious.
So there are a lot of folks who have come out tonight, and so we still are going to do our public hearing. So if anyone would like to come up and comment on this, because once we table something, we can't talk about it anymore until we take it, vote to take it off the table. I realize this is maybe not exactly what you were hoping to have happen this evening. But I think as Councilor Mahalik kind of underscored, we do this because we really care and we want to make sure that everything is safe and of high quality for anyone. So that said though, we do have a public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to come up and comment on this? Please.
Hi, Joanne Stinson, 55, Vining. And while we may be disappointed, I just do want to say as a resident there, we appreciate your thoroughness. Because all we've ever wanted is for the road to be properly developed and safe for us to use up there. So thank you for your attention to that.
Thanks, Joanne. Anyone, anyone else? All right, we will, oh.
Just for the engineer, the developer, I'd like to also know method of compaction for station seven to 10. So what, what was used in, in, before the compaction test? Thank you.
It's like a Thanksgiving recipe list?
Kind of.
It's like a punch list.
Yeah. Well, it's, do you have to add water, do you not have to add water? It all depends on the maintenance, the moisture content of the soil, so.
All right, well, we're going to close the public. All right, well, we're going to close the public hearing then unless there's anyone else that does want to speak. Okay, all right. Counselor Reed's.
Like Bob and Jeff, I went out this morning, took a look at property, and beautiful homes. Joanne, I really respect what you just said. I want you to know that. And, you know, this kind of reminds me of Fuller Drive up in West Cumberland. If you remember, they wanted to be accepted as a town road, and we, well, one concern was that retention pond there. In the first storm that happened, the retention pond failed, and it cost a lot of money to fix it, and we just don't want a repeat of that. But you get this problem fixed on that stretch, and you've got my vote, so. It's a beautiful neighborhood and great people. And with the exception of that guardrail section, I thought they've done a hell of a good job in there.
So it seems like there's some consensus to do a workshop prior to our next meeting, and if there is a motion to...
Before that, I'd just like to thank Councilor Mahalik for bringing the knowledge because this stuff is just, like, beyond, over my head, and I wouldn't know, you know, one way or the other, and also bringing that knowledge and sort of, not just, you know, the issue, but why at all, has been really helpful for me to get a handle on sort of the longer-term impacts of the design potentially, you know, we don't know yet, but, you know, just, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
There's a motion. I would take one.
I would.
Bob, go for it.
Oh, Jeff, go ahead.
Motion wars.
I'll make a motion that we table, item number twenty-five dash one-twenty, to accept Vining Way as a public road.
Second.
Right, and as a reminder, once, there's no discussion on the motion. Okay, all right, so we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Unanimous, Brenda. All of our workshops are open to everybody, just as a heads up. Okay. Hopefully that didn't break the rule of talking about the item after I tabled it.
You're fine, Madam Chair.
Full of illegal activity tonight here. Don't worry, my term's up at the end of the year. Okay, twenty-five dash one-two-one, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on a liquor license application for Social Goose Sports Pub located at three-nineteen Main Street. Okay, so this is where Counselor McGoon really shines. So just kind of a heads up.
I'm sure I'll take that one.
This is the former Louis Grill Rise Pizza site. For those that are wondering what three-nineteen Main Street is, it looks like it's forty-eight indoor seats and potentially sixteen outdoor seats. We've got some good feedback from the code enforcement officer. As they are, this is sort of, there's been some dialogue over the past couple of years about hours of operation, but currently the hours are consistent with those in the TCD, which has a nine PM closing. It sounds like the business owners agree to align with that. There is, just as a heads up to the council, we have been talking about the Town Center District within the comprehensive plan because we did ask them to make a recommendation about this zone as a result, as a part of the planning, the long-term planning, because we weren't able to kind of reach consensus around the Rise Pizza additional hours of operation, and also we didn't want to be kind of making one-off decisions for certain businesses. So that is something that is in discussion at the comp plan level, but for now, normal hours would apply. Mr. Manager, what details have I missed?
Fully briefed, Madam Chair. Once again, I think staffs had a good opportunity to speak with the applicants, and we're excited about the new opportunity, so we hope this all goes well.
Okay, yeah, go for it, Denise.
One, may we pretty please, in the packet, include attachments that come with applications, like this menu and this floor plan and these other things that are listed here, but then I'm like, what's on the menu? And then there's, I can't see anything. Also, the floor plan, you know, useful to know. Forget the menu. Also, noting this potential sixteen outdoor seating thing, I didn't have time to look in the ordinance for the TCD, like, is outdoor seating permitted already? If this is a bar slash restaurant environment, how does that jive with any other ordinances, especially knowing that, you know, there are residential homes right next door, like, potentially outdoor seating? Like, what does that even mean?
We are fortunate enough to have the town planner here this evening, Councilor Thorson, and she can be very helpful when it comes to answering questions.
She can? What? Or just knows her stuff?
If you want the correct answer.
Who are you?
All four hundred and fifty pages, right here. Bridget Perry, the town planner. The Town Center District limits seating to forty-eight, so we'd have to look at that. And if there's outdoor seating, there may have to be some balance between indoor seating and allowed outdoor seating. If any outdoor seating is proposed, it would have to come through the planning board for a site plan amendment.
And follow-up question for ordinance committee people who are there. In addition to hours, are they also discussing types of businesses?
At the comp plan level?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because if you're, you know, expanding, extending hours till, you know, two AM or whatever, I don't know, if you're going to marry that with certain types of businesses, but it's the TCD, it's whatever.
It's a pretty exciting spot.
It's going to be.
No, for sure. There is a public hearing, so unless there's any other council initial questions, I just want to do the public. Oh, Bailey, go for it.
Just to clarify, are they keeping their Brunswick location? I think they are, but I was uncertain.
That's my understanding, Councilor Douglas, this would be a new second location.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this agenda item? Come on up. You must be Catherine.
I am.
Welcome.
I'm Cat Hole, part-owner of Social Goose with my husband Barry in Brunswick. And yes, we are keeping the Brunswick location. This will be a second location.
Great.
We're excited to be here in Cumberland. We have no intent to expand the hours past nine. We've kind of cornered nightlife in Brunswick, so we're not looking to add that here. We're just excited to bring what we offer for scratch kitchen, sports pub food to the locals here.
If you did decide to corner the market, there isn't one. I think you're well positioned. Amazing.
I would say, personally, your seven AM start time, my husband, who is a British Premier League, like, you know.
We have some soccer hooligans in Brunswick as well.
Would be really excited. Just one other, this is a comment and is not contingent on how I will be voting tonight, but just, I think, something that's important for you to know is that this is a highly residential area, and the neighbors are really, really close. And I think, I think this is a great business for the town, but I also just want you to know about that history and can, to be sensitive of the, just sensitive of it and know that it exists, because, you know, it's lots of houses in that area and always, you know, everyone wants to take care of their neighbors, and that's a good thing. And so I just wanted to put that out into the universe. There are some wonderful people that live in that area. I think there are lots of people that are be very excited that you guys are coming to town. We want everyone to always coexist in the best way that they can, but, you know, it can also just be a tricky, tricky thing to navigate, so.
Yes, understood. Anything from anyone, or anyone else in the public? Or does anyone have a question for Catherine?
I don't have any questions, but I just, I want to just echo your comments. You know, while the town's grown a lot since I was a child, we still try to preserve that small-town feel and, you know, just, you know, being a good neighbor helps to do that on all fronts for all the neighbors, so that's my comment.
I'm excited.
Welcome to Cumberland.
Thank you. All right, we'll close the public hearing. Is there anyone else on the council that wants to comment on this?
I would just like to point out how easy it is to read the application where it's all typed out, and you don't need to figure out if anybody's chicken scratch or anything like that. And I'm guessing it's something where you have to fill out and at least put something and make sure that you've read what you're putting in there before you can, you know, complete it. So I think that's something that, it would be great if we could move towards with our different applications to, maybe with the new website, it'll be easier to add that in and really just make forms quick, easy, you know, save, so you can go and get whatever information, come back, upload, but, yeah, just another plug.
Counselor Douglas has your menu up, and it looks fantastic. We are all, yeah.
All I care about is getting fed.
All right.
Madam Chair, I'll give you a motion.
Please.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the liquor license application for the Social Goose Sports Pub located at three-nineteen Main Street.
Give you a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Unanimous, Brenda, welcome to Cumberland, Catherine.
Great.
All righty. Okay, now for the fun part of the evening.
Oh, golly. All right, let's get our town planner up here. Twenty-five dash one-two-two, to hold a public hearing to consider an act on amendments to Chapter three-one-five zoning, Section thirteen, official office commercial South District of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances as recommended by the planning board. Here is our amazing town planner, Bridget Perry, who's going to take us through about forty different ordinance changes as the next part of our agenda. Bridget? And you've memorized it all, right?
We're going to time you.
Oh, okay. Second one's thirty seconds.
All right, so as we discussed in the joint workshop with the planning board regarding LD eighteen-twenty-nine, one of the recommendations that I made was to pilot the zone changes to be LD eighteen-twenty-nine compliant in the office commercial South zoning district. So the red lines that you're seeing here in Chapter three-fifteen dash thirteen are LD eighteen-twenty-nine compliant. They have been reviewed and slightly amended by the planning board last Thursday and have been reviewed by the town attorney with no comments from the town attorney. So now you're up. How was that? Thirty seconds?
That's pretty good.
Apparently zero, according to this. I'm just kidding. You're not timed.
I know.
Bridget, real quick question. Are we jumping the gun here by doing this? If the legislature's going to readdress eighteen-twenty-nine, the session, are we better off seeing what comes out of it than we are to jump ahead?
I mean, that's a really good question. I don't know what's going to come out of what the legislature's going to do. I can't say. There, looks like there are going to be some rules that come out in January, like we discussed in October, and I don't think there's going, the state's going to back down too much from this. I did see that Wyndham has, you know, formally protested the LD eighteen-twenty-nine. I really don't know what's going to come out of it. It's kind of an extension of LD two thousand and three to try and increase housing density because housing has been, you know, studied and found to be, you know, mainshort on housing. So I think for us, when we really look at this district, and do you want me to pull up the map of what we're talking about? Is that helpful? When we really look at this district, there's not a lot of space left. And we know from previous workshops that we have a developer that's interested in building up a community in the southern part of that district. Too many keyboards. Oh, Whitney, we got a new website, right? Busted. And so I think that with the buildup that we've got in that district already, there's not a lot of potential for future development, other than in the southern portion. And LD eighteen-twenty-nine gets them and gets the town, the development going sooner rather than later. And we don't have to go through the contract zone process. Plus, it was kind of interesting to get in there, I'm not getting the map. It was kind of interesting to get in there and to, you know, see what is it going to take to change ordinances as a, just as a pilot. I mean, this is one of our districts. Sorry, guys. Let's go in. So Office Commercial South is in a growth area. It's on sewer and water. And a lot of it is built up. This is where we've got some high-density housing already. And then in this area is where, you know, we're looking at sort of extending from the development that's going on in Falmouth up through here, and we've got a representative from the developer here tonight who will speak during the public hearing and build a community here with some jazz housing. So, I mean, I don't know, it's really hard to say what the state's going to do, but I think this is an opportunity to implement some changes and to get some more housing in Cumberland and get some more commercial in Cumberland.
I hear what you're saying, Bridget, and I appreciate it. I just, I mean, who knows what this legislature's going to do? And you're right, Westbrook's, Wyndham's been spoken about eighteen-twenty-nine. I watched some videos of Scarborough, they've got the same concern out there, and they're building a rapid rate, but this thing, I'm hoping some changes come out, and that's why I asked, are we, by addressing the ordinance change now, are we better off waiting until spring, until the legislature gets out of session than we are doing it now?
I guess that's a decision that you'll have to make. I can't say.
Thanks.
Denise, and then Bob.
Yeah, I think that looking at all these changes would align better when we're talking about, like, the comp plan and the things, you know, yeah, it's a growth area now. It might not stay a growth area, especially if it's mostly built out. It's the way it is now, you know, who's to say something different isn't going to come out of the comp plan? And then we're revising again. And additionally, the provision that we put forth at ordinance recently, where we're mandating fifty percent, like, not to exceed fifty percent residential use in this commercial zone, instead now has been redlined, and it's only specifying the first floor is exclusively commercial use. I don't agree that that is how, you know, this commercial district should be used, especially since after we had the workshop with the developer, it was all housing. I think there was talk of, oh, yeah, sure, we might be able to put some commercial in there since you asked, but it's, I know it was put forth last time, it was all housing. I think this is a bit premature. It's, I get it's trying to align with eighteen-twenty-nine, but we don't know what the end result of that will look like. And I am quite happy leaving this to be a primarily commercially-focused zone while we can and wait to see what comes out of the comp plan. and wait to see what comes out of the comp plan.
Can I respond to that or?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Of course.
Okay. Or I can just list things out? Okay. LD eighteen-twenty-nine, the driver for the small lot sizes is the sewer. So whether we remove the small, whether we remove the lot sizes or the growth area or not, it won't have an impact. And then LD eighteen-twenty-nine also requires that the town allow residential dwelling units in any district zoned as commercial. So we may not have much of a say on the lots going any portion of commercial.
Or a minimum?
No.
So we determine that?
Says we can dictate the first floor uses and design standards if we want to do. Just clarification.
We can dictate first floor uses only. We can't dictate how much of a commercial zone is gonna stay commercial?
It's unclear at the moment until we get some rules from the government. Yep.
So I, I think Bob?
I assure you, concerned Mike, and I had a conversation with Bridget today. I'm waiting for subcontractors and I've been forced into some time off, which seems like I can harass everybody at the town office. But I, and I did share your concern about, you know, what is the necessity of doing this now? Because I'm with you. I believe that there are going to be changes and I, you know, Gorm and Scarborough are the, you know, the dead spot of the fire zone right now with their development pressures. So I'm all right with this one. I think the rest of them, I would certainly think that maybe we could state the language that the acceptance date would be July first. You know, I think that kind of a conversation might be worthy having. I think that the OCS South. I think we could probably go with this one tonight, but I think the rest of them, you know, are delaying acceptance dates or that's not the right word, but you know what I mean.
Like effective?
Effective date.
Effective date.
I think there was Bailey.
No, I forgot what I was gonna say. Go ahead.
Okay, Jeff and then Andrew.
I, you know, I think that it's great that we have a town planner and a planning board that's so far out in front of this. You know, it shows you're on top of it and you're putting a lot of effort into it. And that speaks volumes about, you know, how in tune you are with some of the changes that could be coming down the road. I just don't want to move too fast. I don't want to discourage the hard work that you folks have done because it's not easy to do what you do. And Bridget, I mean, you being this much on top of this, I mean, as a community, we're lucky to have you. So I don't, I don't want you to feel like, you know, this is discouragement. But I just, I hate to put something in place to have to undo it, especially seeing in January, we could hear something new out of Augusta. You know, we're not that far away from January, so I'd kind of be more in line with delaying this a little bit. But I've read it over. I've read all of it. And I mean, it all makes sense and it's all a lot of good work. So it's like, if everything aligns with what happens in January, you're gonna have my seal of approval.
I think that Mr. Sturgis did you?
Yeah, Bridget, if you could, would you speak about what's currently part of the contract zone agreement that exists on the parcels? So, because I don't know, I don't know if we're going from zero to a hundred in one fell swoop. I think it's important to have an understanding of that, specific to this property in this zone.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Please, thank you.
So there's a contract zone that exists. It covers a lot of the land in this zone. And I think that this was touched on on the workshop with Hebert, specifically on this, these parcels. It does outline, I think, somewhere around a hundred and twenty units. Dwelling units would be allowed in that property. Where the suggested changes that would be LD eighteen-twenty-nine compliant bring it to just about two hundred residential units and the rest would be commercial development. What else? The contract zone also gives them by that, by the rule in the contract zone, it gives them a fifty-foot height allowance on structures. So if we added eighteen-twenty-nine compliance on top of that, if it were an affordable unit, by definition, we would go up to sixty-four feet as allowed by the contract zone and state law. What else is in that contract zone? Basically allows for some high-density residential and some commercial development.
And the type of housing was, was the driver workforce housing primarily?
For the developer, but for this, this is stating you can do single-family, you can do, you know, any kind of housing you want for the changes.
Yeah, I think the idea is like a blend of, you know, to make the numbers make sense, right? And we can have Nina speak in a minute. But, you know, if you do some single-family, some smaller single-family, some apartments, some townhouses, you get like this mixed, mixed development, which is economically diverse, has access, like walking access to the trail system that exists down in that part of town, connecting into Falmouth and then, and, you know, building out trails and little parks, like a little community in that area, which is why I'm excited about it. But you don't have to be excited about it. So, so it's, it's just, you know, it'll have a nice, I just feel like it'll be a good economically diverse community down there.
About the affordability piece, if we're still talking about the same plan as before, it wasn't affordable by like definition. It was just affordable based on size and market rate being cheaper. So I don't know, I don't know necessarily if that's gonna like be economic diversity as far as that goes because it's not like affordable housing units. Again, unless that's changed. But I, I guess that's the thing that we've been kind of talking about is this isn't to encourage affordable housing, even though it probably should, like this isn't. This is just to encourage housing, this bill. So it's tricky.
But I think if you address, I'm on the line about this. I'm on the fence about this personally just after some recent planning conferences and conversations that I've had. I think if we just say housing, and Bob has told you this earlier today, if we just say housing, housing is the issue. There's just not enough housing. And we create diverse housing opportunities for people. Then we've, we've addressed the housing crisis, you know, in some way, shape or form, making it more affordable for people who can't afford homes. So I'm leaning towards just going away from affordable housing altogether and just calling it housing as a personal planner preference. It's gonna be more market ready. It's gonna be easier for smaller, you know, for families to get into smaller houses or smaller growing families to get into starting homes. Once they're in a starter home, it's easier to move into a, you know, bigger house somewhere else, switch in with, you know, an older retired person who wants to downsize. You know, it's just movement in the market is an answer to the problem, the housing market. In my opinion. Now I'm just saying too much.
No, no. Would folks like to hear from, is it Nina, the developer?
I mean, I just want to make sure that this is, we're talking about the zone and not a particular developer's project since I didn't know we were talking about someone's project, to be honest. I don't know if this is the right item to talk about this.
Well, it is a public hearing and so
Yeah, sure.
we've got the developer here to also talk about, you know. Any question, any immediate questions or comments for Bridget before we move into a public hearing?
I think the planning board chairman would like to say something.
Sure, come on up.
You want to say anything?
Peter.
I'll let her talk first.
Okay, then we will open the public hearing and then we will hear from the planning board chair and our, and our new friend Nina.
Hi, I'm your new friend Nina. Nina Wile. I'm from Hebert Development and I'm here representing Hebert Development as well as Marta and Erin Agornia, who own thirty acres of Cumberland, land in Cumberland in the OCS zone that we're talking about. They also own about fifty acres just across on the Falmouth town line. I'm moving your mouse around, sorry. There are a lot of keyboards going on up here. Just over the town line where they're building that animal hospital and possible future development over there as well. So my plan was to share in terms of public comment, but I can also address some of the questions you had in specific. But back to what Bridget was just talking about, these amendments certainly are gonna help us create housing for Cumberland's working middle class, not affordable housing in terms of income restrictions, but homes that working families can actually afford. Right now Cumberland's medium home price sits over eight hundred thousand dollars and that's out of reach for teachers and firefighters, municipal employees and close to heart, the employees at the animal hospital that Marta is building just across the town line. And she really believes in building a living community that her staff and her patients' families, I guess her patients don't own homes, but their families do, can live. The density provisions in these amendments, particularly the reduced setbacks and streamlined lot standards, make it financially feasible to build housing at a price point between a subsidized affordable housing and the current medium. And that's talking about homes in the four to five hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. Without the flexibility of these amendments, we simply can't build housing at that price point. The math doesn't work and higher density is essential to creating the housing for the middle class. Second, to the earlier part of the conversation, these amendments make it possible to bring much-needed commercial services to Cumberland. The expanded permitted uses, including restaurants, cafes, grocery stores, athletic facilities, combined with the mixed-use provisions, allow us to create the vibrant, walkable neighborhood that Bridget was just describing, where residents can live, work and access daily services. In fact, if the Social Goose hadn't gotten your unanimous approval, I would have given our card and said, please come build with us because that's the kind of business we'd love to see. And lastly, these changes align with the smart growth principles that benefit the entire community, exactly the kind of development that Cumberland's comprehensive plan calls for. So, you know, in short, obviously, we think these amendments aren't just good for developers, they're good for Cumberland. And they'll help address the housing crisis, build desired amenities to residents, to be closer to residents and create the complete livable neighborhoods that make a community thrive. In terms of the single-family home versus the affordable home versus the multiple dwelling, there is a, I think we need to have at least fifty-five dwelling units for, no, at least twenty housing dwelling units for those fifty-five and older. We also love the idea of having a community that you wouldn't necessarily know if that was a single brownstone that one person owned or has four units in it, so it really feels equitable. So you walk in your front door, you could be walking into a tall, you know, two, three-story brownstone or you could be walking into something that has a lobby and goes to three or four different apartments. So it really does have that inclusive vibe and that's what we're working on with our civil engineers right now to design. It's grown. It's allowed, it's grown, not in size, but in concept since what you saw in February.
So you want to have questions for Nina?
Can I ask?
Please.
What was the name of the company? Herbert? Hebert?
Hebert.
Hebert. And just trying to acclimate myself. What was the address of the lot you own right now?
It's off of Skyview Drive. It doesn't actually have an address yet, I don't believe.
Thirty acres?
Okay. But it's thirty acres, if you go above, there's a vet and a storage facility. If you go above Skyview Drive, it sort of, it dead ends and we're the land above that.
Okay. And so just kind of like, talking out loud really quickly, sorry, no more questions for her.
You could talk out loud?
Okay. Just trying to kind of think about where everybody's at. So what I'm just hearing from everyone is there's a hesitation on the one, twenty-five dash one-two-three through twenty-seven, tabling that until that comes back. And so we're really focused on twenty-five dash one-twenty-two. Am I, everyone following me? So we're looking to change this to allow for that potential development and also to help. Just trying to follow along here.
The entire OCS would basically be a pilot zone.
Okay.
That reflects the principles of eighteen-twenty-nine. That large parcel is under a contract zone currently, but this, or the Hebert property.
Most of this area is under a contract zone? Hebert property or is this, these parcels here? I can't select all of them.
Okay. So is there any concern with that kind of model right now on the one-twenty-two? Because nothing jumps out at me, but I just would be curious what everybody else thinks.
Should we, I told you to share your thoughts, but then I forgot that we had the planning board chair that might want to comment. So maybe we'll round out our public hearing and then we'll go back to you.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm a little befuddled. I'm in a kerfuffle. Sorry. Mr. Planning Board? Mr. Bingham?
Peter Bingham, Nineteen Brook Road. Mike, your comment is correct. I think what we're trying to do, it's to say getting ahead of the curve, that we're doing the homework. If the plan goes into effect next year on all the other districts, we're really kind of doing the spade work. We may do some draft stuff that wouldn't see the light of the day until the legislation is finalized. But it makes no sense to stick our heads in the sand and say that this thing is gonna be totally repealed and nothing, some sort of version of eighteen-twenty-nine is going to go into effect. So we're kind of informing the public because we were, the other night, there was finally an article in the Portland paper regarding Scarborough that these folks didn't know that eighteen-twenty-nine existed. I mean, as far as the Comprehensive Plan Committee is concerned, the only thing that they can recommend is a reconfiguration of the growth areas. And anything in a growth area, as Bridget has said, comes under, and it is in water and sewer, comes under the, not only the five thousand square foot limitation, but also comes under the affordability and height. Affordability, there is a density bonus. So, yeah, we're not going, we're gonna do the homework, but we're not going to do anything as far as recommending any ordinance changes. This particular section of the office commercial, it's basically the only area when any, that really can, anything can be done at this point. Most of the rest of the area going up is built out with commercials. We have the apartment complex. We have the other things. So in reality, the only thing that we're talking about is that very little area off Skyline Drive. Now, you've been around long enough to know that we've had about, over thirty years, we've had about thirty or forty different configurations of Skyline Drive. The most recent one was the affordable apartment complex that was approved but didn't get the state funding. So it's a particular geographic area so that I think our thinking was that there's really nothing that's going to be developed down there. As I think the developer noted, that unless the zoning can be such that it's something that the market will accept. And I think we all know that land in Cumberland has got so expensive that the only way we're going to be able to really do anything as far as more dense is really as far as zoning changes. So I think the thinking of the planning board was that this is a very specific area. I mean theoretically, a developer could come back and request a contract zone that would basically do all the things that are in the ordinance we're projecting. So I think our thinking was that this was a good area that was good for a mixed commercial. And it may make more sense, rather than going through the contract zone, that in this specific area, that it might make sense to kind of tailor made a little bit of the eighteen twenty-nine and a little, a little bit of the contract zone, because it's really in an area. I know a couple of people were at the planning board the other night worried about traffic. Well, traffic just is the same thing with Lucas, that is one of the twenty-two standard conditions of approval. So this thing would be big enough that it would require a traffic study. So, I mean, it's really up to you, but we're, I don't think we're ever going to do anything here unless the market conditions are such that it makes sense for a developer to be able to do it. If you remember when we tried to do the project down by the railroad tracks off Stiles Way, that it was a wonderful project, but it wasn't, the numbers didn't work. So I think it was our intention that, to take it before the council, it was very kind of regionally, very limited geographic area. But, I mean, it's up to you, but there's, there have to be very specific conditions for that area to be developed. And we haven't done a damn thing on this thing for thirty years. And this may be the chance where we can have the mix, we can have housing, we can have commercials, we can have tax revenue. So it was our thought to throw this out. And if you think it's too, too much of a big thing for the area, that's why you guys get the, the big bucks and I've been there before. So that was kind of the thinking on our part that generated it. But we're not going to jump the gun on anything else. But again, the only thing that, that we can control under eighteen twenty-nine right now in the growth areas is the, is the geographic area of that growth area. And so I don't see any, I can't speak for the Comprehensive Plan Committee, but I, I really can't see that, given our objectives over the years, that we're going to try to shrink the growth area in the, the office commercial south. So anyway, that's my story, I'm sticking to it. Thanks, Pete.
Is there anyone else in the public that would like to comment as part of the public hearing? Anyone else on the planning board? I see you both, okay. I know, I see, I see Dave in the back, he's wearing his orange hat. And shorts. All right, we will close our public hearing and move back into council discussion. I think Counselor Douglas, you had the floor.
Anyway, I was just kind of trying to walk through the storyline here and then flag that just reading through this and reading through it again and the red lines, I don't see any issues that would change my mind on anything if we waited until January. But I guess I'd be curious to understand if there was things that seemed of concern to the rest of the council.
I have a concern with waiting until January. And that's, I mean.
Are we, I'm talking about twenty-five dash one, two, two, not waiting till January.
Well, yeah, just with the, with the larger concept of waiting until January.
Okay.
One, two, two, not one, two, zero.
Two, two. Yeah, one, two, two.
Bailey said one, two, zero.
Oh.
Sorry, one, two, two.
One, two, two.
Turn my hearing aid up.
Turn it up, Bob. Sorry, take what you were saying.
No, I, I was just going to say that there may be some adjustments, possibly. That wouldn't be in January, that probably wouldn't be until April or May. I mean, these are things that we're talking about at the comp plan level. So we are just going to be kind of kicking the proverbial can down the road, which, you know, possibly, which is fine if that's what, you know, people want to do. I personally think that this is, I think Peter summed it up beautifully, but I think this is a very measured way of moving forward. We've heard, because it is coming and what we understand, what we, the murmurings have been and no one has a crystal ball, of course, but we haven't heard that this is going to be, what was the one that got repealed, two ninety, the one that we couldn't pay for?
Yeah, the, the senior citizen property tax refund program that they, that they passed for one year and then the following legislature pulled it back because the fiscal note was more than the state budget.
And so I just, I think that, and yes, Denise, your point, what you said earlier about, you know, that this is one property and one project, we are looking at the entire zone, but I do love the way that this is measured. It's going to give us some benchmarking info, it'll take us through the process in a way that feels more responsible to me. Sure, it's possible that this entire thing could, you know, change in eight months' time. On the other hand, there's already an existing contract zone and so is it that worth it to wait? When we're talking and kind of, is vagueness a word? It's, 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 we don't know how it's going to change, right? And so all we have right now are the tools that we have in our toolkit. And I think that this has been really thoughtful from Bridgette and Matt and kind of working alongside to understand what that vision is between the properties that are in the OCS, what their vision is for mixed use, bringing some more commercial in. I also think that if we're going to do a pilot area, we're talking about something that's not smack in the middle of town, right? This is something that's on Route One, it's a great little area to create, you know, this walkable little neighborhood. To Bridgette's point about it being connected to trails, I just, from where I sit, I think it's a perfect place for a pilot project. So that's my, that's my view. Who else? Denise?
I am in no hurry to turn this into a residential area, which is what this is. Like when we were talking about this plan prior when it was brought to us, we were emphasizing that this is like the little piece of commercial we have left and that's the entire purpose of mandating that fifty percent of it has to be commercial. There's a contract zone to allow housing, but we set the percentage, which is what we've done. I do like the additional uses, you know, cafes, grocery stores, markets, what have you. Again, comp plan, are we rezoning commercial elsewhere? Like what is the full plan? Like I can't look at it in a vacuum, even if it is such a small place. It, we already had something come before us in a workshop where it was going to work the way they had configured it with small units with the ask. And the requirement now with ordinances that half of it needs to be commercial, as it is in a commercial zone. So I, that's, like, I need to see how it fits into the larger piece of the puzzle for myself. And if that, like, requires me to wait until the last second to put this into place when it's actually mandated and like they're forcing us to, then fine. Like, I don't see the rush. And again, doing something so that a business that has been talking behind the scenes with people to try to like, I, I don't know. It's weird to me that there are like conversations happening to do things early to make it favorable for a particular developer to build something in that area that wouldn't work otherwise with our current ordinances. I don't know if that's what the takeaway is, but like looking at our agenda, I thought we were talking about ordinances. I didn't know that there was going to be like a, a particular project tied to this. So that's just kind of off putting to me, to be honest.
Can, is it okay if I respond?
Yeah, please.
This is not the only developer that I've talked to about increasing uses in that area.
And again, I'm totally, totally cool, like adding commercial uses, that's great. I think we should do that anyways. But that's, as this is, you know, a commercial zone, as long as it stays that way and as long as we're able to, I am in favor of mandating that half of it be commercial while we still can, so. End of my speech.
So if you actually answered this, because before Denise sort of touched on this, but does the agreement that we have now and the current version of eighteen twenty-nine, it allows us to say for a commercial area, we can dictate the first floor, we can say the first floor is commercial. And then the second, you know, above that, you can put residential in and mixed use and all. Can we say X percentage of buildings in the area have to be commercial on the first floor or anything like that? Like sort of to Denise's point about, you know, right now it says fifty percent needs to be commercial and that's the ordinance. Does the contract zone agreement and then also eighteen twenty-nine still give us that ability to dictate a percentage of, you know, ensuring that it's not, this commercial zone turns into a, a ninety-nine percent residential zone that has, you know, a coffee shop and that's commercial?
Sure. So the contract zone has specifications, I was just going to try and pull it up here, on what it is allowed, I can't find it, in terms of residential and commercial. If in the current contract zone, I believe the way that it is written, if a developer wants to come in and build only one hundred and twenty units, like we had proposed and approved at the planning board a couple of years ago, that is possible. So that thirty acres can go right now in the current contract zone to residential only. Can be a hundred and twenty units of residential development only. It would, does not say that any part of it has to be commercial. So that would be allowed right now, today. Does that answer all of your question? The, the.
Yeah, so.
There's nothing in the underlying zoning or in the contract zone that would require this particular thirty acres to be anything but residential. So one hundred percent of the lot right now can be developed as a residential property, solely residential.
But not just this specific lot, just any, anything that's in, this might be the only one that's just, that's undeveloped, just this one.
So this one, this is a complicated zoning district because a lot, I think we're like up to here, hold on one second. I think we're up to here in a contract zone. We're talking about very little land here. And then this, of course, is the Mark development, there's a couple of residential parcels here. Quite frankly, we're not, no one's going to develop on this tiny sliver. If you've driven by it, it's really a sliver of land. So you're not talking about much and the contract zone covers this entire southern portion of this district. And as you can see with the imagery that I brought up here, I'll zoom in here. A lot of it is built out per the contract zone. So we've got our, you know, Clipper Street and we've got our apartment complexes here. We've got the commercial development along the front, which was the original intention of the contract zone, to put commercial right in the front along Route One and tuck the residential in the back. So when you, so there's, as you know with contract zones, there's just a lot of details in the contract zones and you have to comply with one or the other or both, because you've got underlying zoning and then you've got the contract zone. So in underlying zoning, if we change this, yes, we would allow residential uses across all of these parcels that exist in the zoning district. That will be mandated by the state eventually, if we don't decide to allow it right now.
And the, this is maybe someone for you Denise, the fifty percent, are you getting that from the, what would now, what was formerly eighteen? Section eighteen would be twenty-seven mixed use?
I'll have to go all the way up and refind it, but it's the.
Second, third.
It's the one that.
Age of.
Crosses out the fifty percent thing.
Not exceed fifty percent residential use as measured by square footage.
And all, and instead it's replaced with, commercial needs to be on the bottom floor.
Yeah, that's mixed use, but so that just, that fifty percent is just for a mixed use building, right? It's not for the usage of the zone, you know, we have to have a commercial and fifty percent of the zone. It's just, if you have a mixed use building currently, you can't have residential in more than fifty percent of that building or that lot. And this would just remove that because eighteen twenty-nine says that we can dictate what's on the first floor, but we can't dictate what's on floors two through four. Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, that's the way that I'm reading it and understanding it. When rules come out in January, we would know for sure what we're allowed to dictate.
All right.
And to answer the first part of your question, I mean, this is fairly recently, but as far as I remember, and when this went through ordinance, it did apply to the zone, that if you're, yeah, doing mixed use, it needs to be fifty percent of that building needs to be commercial.
Right, that's just of a mixed use building, whereas they could just put houses in. So it's not the zone has to be all encompassing fifty percent.
But this change also adds the ability though to put in all the different types of housing, whereas before.
Yeah, yeah, but it adds a whole bunch of different, single family and.
As, yeah, before, the only way to get residential was in mixed use.
Okay.
But now the state's mandating us to add residential to commercial uses. So we're pre, you know, we're being proactive, I guess, in doing it now.
Can we still mandate mixed use as residential in the sense of, is a commercial zone that's, the whole, the original purpose, I should say, is primarily commercial? And if you want to put housing there, you also have to have commercial in that building? And then, you know, whatever bits, or is it, is this, does eighteen twenty-nine make it so you can just put commercial? Or sorry, you can put residential?
Eighteen twenty-nine says that you have to allow residential uses. And it also says in a separate section that you can't dictate, like, is it a single family dwelling? Is it a multi-plex, multi-family dwelling, those kind of things?
So we can't say we're allowing residential on the second, third and fourth floor, but first floors have to be commercial for everything new?
Only?
Kind of thing, yeah. Like, it's, it's not giving us that ability to say, we're going to at least have the first floor be commercial for everything new. And then we're allowing residential.
Got it.
With mixed use.
Got it.
Because it's all technically potentially mixed use now.
Okay, so, so I think if I'm understanding you correctly, if we wanted to form that development, we would say everything on the first floor would have to be commercial and then only residentials would be on the second floor?
Yeah, does it give us that where instead of adding in the dwelling detached, dwelling attached, you know, single family and all, can we just say like, yeah, you can definitely do residential, it just has to be in a mixed use building?
That part's unclear, I don't think so. I think you have to allow, like if someone wants to put a single family dwelling in there, they can. The other thing that just comes to mind is that when you're in a multi-family building, one of those units is allowed to have an ADU. And that ADU could be attached or detached, but we can't control that. So it could be in fact an ADU that is a single family home. So I don't think that we could be that specific and say that we're only allowing mixed. I don't think that we could be that specific and say that we're only allowing mixed use with only commercial space on the bottom because. That would go counterintuitive to state law, which allows you to have an accessory dwelling unit, which could. Be a detached, basically a detached, single family home under the new laws.
Alright.
And that ADU law was effective in September, so it, whether our ordinance reflected or not, that's law for us right now. Bob.
I think I understand the, the game in play here. We do make reference here to, uh, in this zone is encouraged to be inconsistent with the Route One design guidelines. So I'm not going to abrogate by complete responsibilities to the planning board, but. On some level, I think there's a level of understanding. Between the planning board and the council that we're not getting out of control here with this, this is a, we're. And that's, at some level, it's unfortunate that the developer had an opportunity to speak because it, it, it kind of jaundiced.
I agree.
Colors my view a little bit, uh, you know, uh, I think she's well meaning and well intentioned. And I think the conversations between the planter and the planning board and the developer. Are indicated of, of what the desires of this community is and we're not looking for. Unbridled residential building down there. But I think.
That's the existing contract.
I think the opportunity, as Peter says, this is a small parcel of land that's. For the most part, the remaining parcel developer land in that OCS district. I do have some reservations, but I think that, uh, I'm going to just, uh, I, I think that the. The language is crafted enough here that there is, uh, more good will come of this than. Trying to, to get down and just start wholesale rewriting this proposed ordinance change.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Jeff?
I'm ready to move it forward for this one.
Any other council comments?
I was just, it's tricky with the, like Bridget said, you know, you've got the zone, the contract zone and then. Eighteen twenty-nine coming in and sort of. It'd be a lot easier if we just had a, you know, three bullets of this is what's avail, this is what we can currently, what can currently be done. This is the change, you know, doing this changes that.
I would rather just come in, have the developer come in here with a contract zone and we fight it out and, you know. But that's.
But just, if I'm allowed, um, just for clarification purposes, it will, as far as we can tell right now, under current law. And our current zoning and our current comprehensive plan, um, which is all we have to go on, the developer will be allowed to just do this. On July one, twenty twenty-six. That's part of the reason why we wanted to pilot it too, is to have this discussion, right? This is, this is the impact.
Uh, man, I don't know if, if it'd be Bridget or you or somebody, but it'd be good to know from the state. If in commercial zones, you know, I, I think the ADU is the, the issue that, that Bridget brought up that. Might make this unfeasible, but. Can we say in the commercial zones, you know, yeah, you can have mixed use all you want, go for it. Um, but you can't have, you know. Primarily detached, single family homes, you know, that's, you're, you're, that's what you're primarily building is. Single family homes or duplex or whatever, you know, um, and it has to be, you know, initially on the first floor. A commercial and then floors two through four, if you want, you can do mixed use, that's fine, and then you can put a detached. Um, single family on there or not, like sort of. How are they going to view that if, if we tried to, you know, keep the thrust of a commercial zone, commercial?
If I may, Madam Chair.
Please.
The conversations that I've heard about revisions to eighteen twenty-nine that are, uh, looking to come forward are not gonna be, uh. To that extent, I think it's more to clarify some, some very refined areas of, at least at the president's time. Uh, of gaps that exist, uh, in the bill, um, where there may be a question or two, as, uh, I think when Mary. Costigan was here, she was talking about some of the revisions that they're looking at, um, I don't think they're looking to do a wholesale restructuring of eighteen twenty-nine. Which would be considered, you know, considered a lot, a lot of the ideas that you're looking at there where, um. I think they're thinking about freeing up smaller lots that may be in commercial zones in, in, in towns and cities that. Currently may only have commercial as an allowed use because they haven't been seen as more residentially, uh, or, or been more exclusive. Exclusionary to residential, uh, uses, so I don't think they're looking to make, I mean, despite, you know, uh, Scarborough and, uh. And Wyndham, uh, saying what they have, uh, my, my thought is that, you know, they wouldn't. Even broach something as, uh, and council leaders will appreciate this, something as, uh. Largely despised as the payroll tax that was put into place last year, uh, for a one percent tax that. You know, that is borne by the, by the taxpayers who don't really realize it, um, they wouldn't even move on that and this is. Been their, their flagship item, so I think they're just looking to refine it, uh, some, but I don't. Everything I've heard is they're not looking to make a wholesale rewrite of it, unfortunately, so I think, um, you know. In this circumstance with OCS, uh, I think you're looking at two parcels, um, where they're looking at, you know. Some of the discussions have been on one, one of the parcels with a significant, uh, commercial developed, uh, forecast to take place, but they're. I'm not sure if they've got to that point yet on that project, whereas the other one, as, as Bridget has said, they, they could put a hundred and twenty units. Plus or minus tomorrow, uh, just to do it, so, um, it's probably, probably your best case scenario for a pilot approach on this. But you are still looking at, you know, I, you know, the conversations with Mr. Hebert and Nina as well, uh, a lot of the. Development that they're looking at is a mixed use, it may not be in one building, but there will be commercial uses in there, cause they're looking at. You know, and, and to Council Thorsten's point as well, uh, you know, you don't wanna look at this specific to one project. So it may be premature, but I know conceptually, I think. They're looking at maximizing the value of the property, but looking at having amenities in there, that also makes those properties attractive to people to come in. So it could be a cafe or, uh, a dry cleaner, exercise facility, things along those lines, uh, that, that may be going in there too, so. I guess it's a long way to say that I don't have a hundred percent of the answer for you, but I, I don't think they're walking away from, uh. Saying if you wanna do, if you wanna have residential, you're gonna have to have commercial, I think they're, they're, they're just really focused on the residential. And they don't really care too much about the, a blend.
Alright, well, I think it's, unless anyone has any other comments, that time of the night where. It's a tricky thing to talk about, but we can't sit here for the whole night, I mean, we can if you want to, but.
I'd make a motion. Twenty-five dash one twenty-two, I move to amend chapter three fifteen zoning section thirteen office commercial south district of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances. As recommended by the planning board.
Give you a second. So motion and a second, is there any discussion on the motion? Call for a vote, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, don't go anywhere, Bridget.
I know.
Next up is, uh, and thank you all folks on the planning board for being here tonight, um, thank you Nina from Hebert. Um, twenty-five dash one two-three, to hold a public hearing to consider an act amendments. Uh, to chapter three one five zoning, section forty-four, multiplex dwellings of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances as recommended by the planning board. I mean, Bridget, since you're there, do you wanna tee us up on this? Yes, I do, I'm just getting there, okay. These revisions are directly driven by LD eighteen twenty-nine, um, just revising. Our current multiplex dwellings chapter, as you see, um, in the packet and. You know, just getting ahead of the game. Hitting off some of the low hanging fruit. Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Bob.
Again, I, I would hold the effective date to July first.
That's, that's where I am for the next four.
July first?
Yep.
Is that the date of, that's the date of implementation?
That's the date that, uh, LD eighteen twenty-nine, uh, comes, you know, in a, in a sense effective. Although there are sections that if our ordinance, Bridget, you could talk to this probably, where ordinance is silent on it, that come into play like now. Just because we, and I think there may be a couple in here that are there, but there are others that really, yeah, eighteen, July first is the date that. You know, it really becomes live law.
Sorry, I had July thirtieth in my head, so thank God someone else has the details.
Either one of those dates.
Are we missing one? Not that you don't have enough, but. Okay, um, so, multiplex dwellings is. July. Conversions, the definition of ADU was effective in, um, September, whether you choose to adopt it. Tonight, it is still state law and we will comply with the state law. Um, section fifty-five, you know, the recommendation from the planning board is that you repeal manufactured housing. And default to the new definition, which refers to the allowed uses in the state law. Um, for manufactured housing, um, and that was adopted by the state in nineteen eighty-nine, so we are. A little behind. Wildly out of date, um, I, I am happy for you to, to move that to July as well, if that is what the board. Chooses, um. Three fifteen dash fifty-seven, parking and loading, um, that is, was effective in September from the state. And the wording and definitions, chapter. Was, is just revising the wording and definitions based on the actions that you may or may not take. In the preceding ordinances, um, we're definitely missing. Some backlots and guest houses that I got to Brenda, but I guess they're not on here.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so we'll just do those another time, okay. So I, up, up to you, it's getting late.
I have a question about, um, where it mentions percentage of open space, um, was that. Revised to match somewhere in conservation subdivision or something and it was like, had been incorrect before, or is that, we're really decreasing that?
Um, no, that, that was in conflict with conservation subdivision and clustered subdivision.
That was gonna be my question.
So I, I revised it to match what is required in subdivision law.
So the conservation and cluster subdivision, those. Fifty percent track parcel and then the twenty-five percent other zones, that matches, that's, comes from state law and that's why. We have that in those ordinances, or is it, is it just that we're, we have two conflicting ordinances and we're choosing. The subdivision ordinance over this ordinance for that.
Okay, so the subdivision ordinance is. State law, but it's also town law with the conservation and the cluster requirements.
Right, so, so this one just is not reflecting the state law, really, I mean. We have two, we have two ordinances, one of them is coming from state law and then this one.
Was just cleanup.
Was just cleanup, so it's not, we're not just picking, we prefer this number over this number, it's, we're taking, we're changing these numbers to make them. Concurrent with state law.
Yeah, and I think.
As opposed to just another number that we came up with.
And if I go back and look, I think that conservation subdivision and cluster subdivision, those changes happened more recently. And so I don't think that anyone went back to multiplex and changed those based on conservation and clustered subdivisions. I, I mean, I, I'd have to go track it to really find out, um, also. In eighteen twenty-nine, we can't put greater restrictions on multiplex units than we can on single family dwellings, so. That was also a driver, but it most, basically, it's just cleanup. Which ones, just to remind me, Bridget, so, uh, parking is already in effect? Sorry, which, what are the ones that went into effect in September? So, um. Conversions, the ADU piece of conversions has already gone into effect. Okay, so that's twenty-five, one, two, four. Yep. Okay. Manufactured housing is. Is that our nineteen eighty-nine? Kind of nineteen eighty-nine, um, I mean, I'm making a recommendation that we just remove our ordinance and fall back to the state law. On manufactured housing, um. But that, I mean, that is up to you, um, section, let's see, one twenty-six, parking and loading is already. A law and pieces of the word usage and definition, where especially when it concerns, um. Accessory dwelling units, those would already be law. Okay.
So are we sort of discussing right now? One twenty-three through one twenty-seven, or are we still? You know, sticking just on one twenty-three and then we'll deal with that and then we'll go to one twenty-seven, twenty-four, et cetera.
You looked like you were about to say something.
In, in, uh, one twenty-seven, there was, um, a reference to, uh, backlots that was removed and. And I spoke with Bridget today about adding that back in, because it, I think even though. We don't create any more backlots, they are, it backlogged in the community and I think it's important to retain the definition.
Which ones were missing, there was some you mentioned that would be coming in addition to some of these that might not have made that, made it. Yeah, so I, um. Was that twenty-five, one, two, three? No, they're just not on here as an agenda item altogether. Whole separate item, okay, got it. There's two other ordinances that the planning board is recommending that the town council repeal. Okay. Yeah, but we'll do that later. But that was the driver for the removal of the backlot definition, um, because we're suggesting that we just delete the backlot. Ordinance, which is no longer really a, backlots exist, but we don't do them anymore. Okay. So if we were looking at, um, the specific items. The, the July, or, I, my feeling would be that the ones that are already in effect, we bring up to speed because. They're already following the state law, right?
One twenty-four, one twenty-five, one twenty-six.
Yeah. Yeah, is that, and then, is there, for one twenty-seven, I think you said the ADUs is already into effect, but. There are other elements that aren't? Yeah, a lot of it was cleanup. Okay.
We also have this blurb about further updating. From the town attorney, what a dwelling unit is, that is not what is here in our packet as well, so. What are we taking then, this recommendation from the town attorney?
Yes.
Okay.
And then if you, um, choose to adopt. The conversions chapter, I would recommend the attorney's recommendation to remove section B to condominium. Um, because she said that is covered under subdivision law. Um, because she said that was covered under subdivision law. Which was actually a conversation we had at planning board, we're like, do we even need this? And we said, sure, we'll just keep it in there, but turns out we don't.
I have no objections to twenty-five dash one, two, seven either. Just throwing that out there.
Yeah, some of it's cleanup and a, a lot of the definitions that I added are state. Definitions.
And that's, that was not helpful for, yeah, making it consistent, right?
There was no real creative freedom there, I just took what the state says and said, oh, we need those two.
Cause there was something around chickens that might be coming our way, right? Chickens versus hens?
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna chicken it up at planning board.
I'm very excited about this. Oh, I will tell you all about it, it's very exciting.
There's a new chicken law, if you didn't know.
I'm gonna have to recuse myself from that. Particular one. Okay. All right, so, Bob, how do you, are you still feeling July?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, how do you feel about the ones that are already in effect?
I'm all right with, uh, uh, moving forward with them.
I, oh, God, no, does anyone else have anything to say?
I'm ready to vote when you guys are, so, I know what I'm gonna do.
Are we voting on?
Um, I think that we probably.
Individually or as a package?
I think that might be the easiest, especially with the town attorney stuff, but that's why we have a town manager, what do you think, sir?
If, if there's council, um, consensus, I think you could probably look at one twenty, uh, twenty-five dash one twenty-three separately. And then if you wanted to, the council wanted to, you could look at one twenty-four, five, six, and seven, uh, to act. To, you could act on those this evening to, they'd be taking place, you know, within the next thirty days, they'd become effective law. Under the acceptance there. Um, so you could probably act on those in block and then the one twenty-three. If you wanted to put that with an effective date of July first, two thousand and twenty-six.
I'm good with that.
Might not be a bad approach. But I, I operate on those two different blocks separately.
Uh, so for, and that covers with Alyssa's memo?
And then.
Yeah, Mary, Mary from Bernstein, sure.
Oh, sorry, Mary, sorry, wrong town attorney.
Yeah, we can, um, with, as amended.
Yeah, as amended, I think would be fine.
And I got you covered.
If so, Matt, just to clarify, the date would be July first?
Yes.
I'll give you a motion if you guys.
For one twenty-three?
For one twenty-three and then I'll also do one twenty-four to twenty-seven. Am I good?
Yep, uh, one twenty-three is for July first, twenty twenty-six?
Yeah. I move to amend chapter three fifteen zoning section forty-four, multiple dwelling units of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances. As recommended by the planning board effective July first, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
I'm, oh, go ahead.
We have a motion in a second, is there any discussion on the vote? All those in favor? Unanimous, Brenda, was that, that was a yes, okay, thank you.
Really just hugged my hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. I move to amend chapter three fifteen zoning section forty-five, conversions of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances as recommended by the planning board. In addition to twenty-five, one, two, five, I move to amend chapter three fifteen zoning section fifty-five, manufactured housing. The Cumberland Code of Ordinances as recommended by the planning board. In addition to twenty-five dash one, two, six, I move to amend chapter three fifteen zoning section fifty-seven, parking and loading of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances as recommended by the planning board. In addition to twenty-five dash one, two, seven, I move to amend chapter three fifteen zoning section four, word. Usage and definitions of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances as recommended by the planning board.
I would amend that motion. In one twenty-seven to reinstate backlots. That was stricken, a lot which does not abut or front on a street and where access to the road is by a private right-of-way.
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, does that pass the straight face test, Mr. Manager? We didn't put the as amended at the end.
Yeah, if you may want to add, as, as amended by recommendations from the town's attorney.
As amended by the recommendations by the town attorney.
And then I think, I think you should be good, Madam Chair.
Team effort, thank you all. Call for a vote, or, or sorry, any further discussion on the motion?
No.
Did we have a second?
Yes.
All those in favor? Unanimous, Brenda, okay, and thank you for that Herculean effort. All of you. Yes, okay. Great, uh, next up, we are going into twenty-five dash one twenty-eight to authorize the town manager to accept payment for delinquent taxes. An amount of twenty-seven thousand dollars on property identified as tax map U fourteen, lot zero, zero, eight. Mister Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, this evening, uh, as you, as the council may recall, uh, when a property has been delinquent for. A certain amount of time, uh, it needs to come to the council to accept payment of taxes. Uh, we've been trying to bring, uh, forward, uh, these as they do come about. Uh, this one in particular has, uh, had a significant amount of outstanding, uh, taxes due towards it. Uh, which they brought forward a, uh, a large sum at this point to get them. Bring a lot of the past due up to, uh, at least out of, out of trouble. Uh, and there is a plan to have the rest of it taken care of, uh, uh, in the near future as well. Uh, and I think it was a, they seem to have brought forward a good, a good plan and they have the funds, uh, to make that happen, uh, over the next few months. So, uh, it's our recommendation to accept payment at this point in time and I think there's, uh, this will get this back up and on the, on, in the black, on the ledger, so to speak.
Any council discussion?
Uh, so, Matt, these balances include interest?
Yes, interest and, uh, reporting fees and any other fees, so, or attorney's fees or even mailing for certified mailers. All, any expense that the town has incurred, uh, plus interest on that is all, as part, part of this.
Thank you.
Yep.
So I've asked this before, is there a, is there, there in fact, a plan?
Yes. Yeah, is it, yeah, we're.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, oftentimes you may see where someone just wants to come in with a hundred dollars and they've got a significant amount. But, you know, coming in with a twenty-seven thousand dollar check and stating, you know, this is my plan to go forward, that's, uh, yeah, we think this is got. We're, we're, we have high confidence level.
Sorry, I just have a quick, like, process question. When these do come up, is there like a formal plan? Like, is there something in writing, like, you're gonna give us X amount of installments for, you know, X amount of time or? Just curious. For the follow-up portion.
We don't, we don't answer, we don't answer into like a written, uh, but basically, the staff has taken the approach to say. This needs to be something we're gonna.
So you just threaten people, I'm just kidding.
It's the dough or some, something, or we gotta break something. No, it's, it's usually, uh, along the lines of saying, you know, the council, council has stated in the past that we needed something that has, you know. A legitimate end in the future, uh, to get to that point. Because if you're just looking at and the payments that you make don't offset the, the interest that accrues. Then it's, we're not really accomplishing anything, so we need to have, this basically been part of the conversation.
I'll give you a motion.
Oh, my gosh, Jeff.
Yeah.
Right on.
Let him go.
I'm ready to go, so. Item number twenty-five dash one twenty-eight, I authorize the town manager to accept payment for delinquent taxes in the amount of twenty-seven thousand dollars. On property identified as tax map U fourteen, lot zero, zero, eight.
I'll give you a second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Unanimous, Brenda, okay. All right, moving along to twenty-five dash one two nine. To authorize the birthday boy town manager to accept payment for delinquent taxes in the amount of four thousand nine hundred. On a property identified as tax map R zero four, lot zero, zero, four.
If I may, Madam Chair, similar circumstances as well, this, this actually takes out the, uh, the part that was due, uh, prior to. And then there is, uh, last year's and the current years as well, that's there, but there is, uh. Twenty-four was really the important, important one, but we, we understand twenty-five will also be coming up to, and up to terms here fairly shortly as well. This one obviously wasn't as significant of, uh, of a number.
It's great news.
Yes, very much.
Any council discussion?
I'll give you a motion.
Okay.
I move to authorize the town manager to accept payment for delinquent taxes in the amount of four thousand nine hundred dollars on property identified as tax map. R zero four, lot zero, zero, four.
I'll give you a second.
All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, Brenda. All right. Next up. Uh, twenty-five dash one three zero to appoint William Longley as alternate electrical inspector.
Let me tee this up for you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, cause I, I think, I think you actually know the electrical inspector that Mr. Longley will be replacing and.
Yes, ma'am, just, and we're just looking at, as our, our current electrical inspector, uh, Richard Wentworth is out on, uh, medical leave for a bit. We are, we do not have a backup, uh, electrical inspector, however, Mr. Longley is, is certified to perform such inspections. And this is a quieter, well, a more quiet part of the year, uh, although things are quite busy, but. Bill believes that he, uh, can add to his former code officer of the year resume. And pursue maybe the electrical inspector of the year resume, but, uh, but he's willing to step up and, and do this for, but. To do that and become the alternate electrical inspector, uh, we just need to have council action to authorize him to, to be as such.
Council member?
This is more of a process question, but should we have alternates identified already, you know, going, going forward, you know? So we don't have to sort of come and wait the two weeks in between, you know? Let's say somebody goes out tomorrow and then we gotta wait another two weeks to approve them and, you know, just. Two weeks is a long time, but if you're trying to get your stuff inspected, it can really mess things up, so we're, sort of have that set up.
We, um, Mr. Longley's been doing the inspections, uh, and, and signing off on them, cause he, he is actually certified to do the inspections, but, uh. And we also share Richard with the town of Yarmouth, so, uh. You know, it's one of those things we're both currently having the conversation of. You know, what's our long-term plan gonna be as well, if this does take place again in the future, uh, to do that? Luckily, we have Bill who has the ability to do those inspections and does, does it, so. This is more along the lines of, I mean, you could contract it out, we could hire someone who had that certification to do it. Bill does, so that kind of, that bridges our gap, but, uh, it is something that we knew have to look at, uh, long-term as well. Just in case something, you know, if Bill or a person who does our code officer work didn't have that certification, so. You could always work with a, uh, you know, a master electrician and they can sign off on that as well, they have that ability because they, they, they know how to do that. But, um, and some towns are pursuing that or have that as their fallback. Uh, but since Bill has it, we can, we can do that now, but it is something we'll have to look at in the future.
I'd like, yeah, I'd like to see sort of, uh, you know, at some point, I'm guessing that Bill's gonna retire.
No, never.
He told me he's gonna outwork me.
You know, and I'd like to make sure that we have something in place for, you know, if he gets sick, kind of thing, and we, we don't have that fallback option. I'd rather be, you know, prepared than lucky.
No, I know, I just don't like thinking about things like that.
Basically a contractor.
Yeah, those are all, and those are all, this, you have to look at succession planning across all disciplines. Codes are a huge one, uh, that's tough to, tough to fill as well with qualified candidates across the board. So, uh, we do try to work and explore as council available appreciate this, we try to find our opportunities for collaboration. Uh, where if someone does get short, that we can, we could read, you know, Bill at one time was code officer for both Yarmouth and Cumberland. And like North Yarmouth right now contracts with Gray to do their, their code officer work, so. That's one of those areas that a lot of towns do find that we have to collaborate on, uh, to do that and, and be able to provide backstopping for in the case of, uh, in case of, uh, system breakdown.
Yep, Denise.
Your comment kind of reminds me about budget season when we're going through and looking at all this training and like, oh, all this training, it's expensive, but. Like cross-training and stuff like that and getting certified, even if it's not necessarily your job, but it could be. Where you're gonna be a backup and, you know, designating this person now that you have the training, you're in line, like, if we ever needed you. It's just a reminder of like, the training does go to something, like, since Bill is, you know. Amazing in all these different ways, we were able to avoid hiring a contractor or whatnot, so.
And, and, uh, Bill's backup is Chief Small as well, he's our alternate code officer. So when, when Mr. Longley goes on vacation, uh, Chief Small can, can step in there as well. So we do have some redundancy in, in-house.
Chief Small looked at the electrical wiring inside our barn and nearly had a heart attack and ripped it all out and fixed it. He's our babysitter's dad, it makes, is it, so it's in his interest that his daughter doesn't get electrocuted when she's at our house? High, high level of. Okay.
The fire marshal side of him coming out.
I mean, it's an old barn, I think it would go up like, you know, pretty quickly, anyhow, is there a motion?
I'll be happy to give you a motion. On item number twenty-five dash one thirty, I move to appoint William Longley as alternative electrical inspector.
Second. Bob got it, good job, Bob. Motion is second, all those in favor? Unanimous, Brenda, okay. Twenty-five dash one three one to authorize the town to participate in the cost sharing for an enrollment study for MSAD fifty-one with North Yarmouth and MSAD fifty-one. Uh, the, we would like to, this evening, I would like to suggest after receiving a note from, um. Superintendent Porter and speaking with the school board chair, um, that we. Revisit the scope of the study at our next TRICOM meeting and in the, because, um. How, how would you characterize the, the North Yarmouth response, Matt?
I think a good way to summarize it is, is, there's, uh, there may be additional road that needs to be covered, uh, for all three parties to be understanding what the. What the requested product is and the amount of work and funding that needs to go into it is required.
That sounded beautiful. Um, so what I would suggest, um, and if we bring up the word table. And what also, um, the superintendent suggested is that the three bodies, uh, or representatives from the three bodies come together to talk about that larger scope. That we'd like to see in that study, so enrollment, but also growth, um, and development. So what I would like to do is, one, get feedback from all of you, uh, as to what you would like to see included in the study. You know, what is important to you, what data points would be important to you, we do not need to go through this right now. Uh, but we would take all of that information, um, uh, into discussions about what an RFP would entail. So rather than, um, uh, so, so kind of, as Matt said, just sort of flushing out the scope of that study and the scope of the RFP. I was also hoping that our amazing town planner Bridget would be willing to, um, help us in that exercise as well. Um, since this is her wheelhouse and making sure that we have an RFP, um, if we are gonna be funding it as well, right? Um, so that it covers what we wanna know as well as what the district wants to know.
Question.
Yeah.
Is this meant to be basically like we're doing an enrollment study, but both towns are also doing a growth study out of it? Like, do we not do our own studies that could be provided as a supplement to enrollment? Like, what, do we have like a schedule question? Do we have like, do we do growth studies periodically to where that would be readily available without? You know, having to put this on hold to make it a bigger project?
Yeah, there, there are some growth studies that are taking place concurrently with our comprehensive plan as well, and they do it. The school recently did enrollment study back in twenty-three. Um, there's a lot of elements of that that are there, so. The school recently did enrollment study back in twenty-three. There's a lot of elements of that that are there, so I think I think a lot of those questions need to be asked at the group level to decide, okay, what's the scope and scale of really what are we looking for to, what's the product that you're looking to get here and kind of get it refined? And then as well as what the financial responsibility, how the financial responsibilities for paying for it are gonna be explored or divvied up.
Okay. So we're not talking about like a three-way equal split anymore or whatever. We can talk about this later.
We can talk about this.
I think that's why why tabling it until after that discussion might be the best. That way you can find the answers to all those questions and more, Councilor Thorson.
I think tabling it's a really good idea.
Who wants to make the motion?
I'll give you a motion. I move to table the, am I good?
Yeah.
I move to table the town to participate in the cost sharing agreement for an enrollment study for MSAD fifty-one with New York, North Yarmouth and MSAD fifty-one.
Bob got it.
Okay.
Alright, there's notice, we're not allowed to talk about the motion because it's a motion to table, so we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Unanimous Brenda. Okay, great.
New business, Councilor Mahalik.
Alright, couple things. So food pantry, twenty dollars. I'm really excited that, you know, we're gonna be starting to talk about capital planning here in the near future. I know we've been talking about that for a while, but I really think it's gonna help with those towns' long-term strategic planning, so I'm excited about that. Congratulations to the football team on state, on Class C state championship. Joint Standing Committee with North Yarmouth, twelve sixteen, December sixteenth, four P M, North Yarmouth. And then lastly, to everyone in the town of Cumberland and surrounding communities, happy Thanksgiving. And that's all I have.
Councilor Thorson.
Speaking of CIP, I saw our workshops are canceled. Are those rescheduled?
Uh, yes. So Matt, do you want to hit that?
Yes, I'm looking at doing both workshops in January.
Okay, good deal.
We'll try to split it up across, but we're working with staff to to get that all.
Okay.
Give it up.
Gotta do the shout-out for the Sound of Music, you know, because we all saw it. Unless you didn't, in which case you're a loser. I'm just kidding, but it was really good. We saw Mama Mia prior and that was amazing too, so it's just, it's great to see students who can really sing. Like, I've participated in a lot of plays that were horrifying because we don't know how to sing. And, you know, people were forced to sit through it, but this is like a highly enjoyable professional experience in an amazing part of the facility, which is, it's really great. Highly recommend people go to those, especially if you're not like sure if you're into theater or not. It's a lower barrier to entry. It's relatively cheap, so you're not like losing a whole lot. And you're also, you know, like, those funds are going back into the school and back into the program, so recommend it. Yes, happy Thanksgiving. Be safe. If you're frying a turkey, learn how to do it first. Careful with travel, you know, it's supposed to be a little crazy out there. Ordnance Committee wanted to get some feedback on whether or not we want to have a meeting to discuss what our lands and conservation, oh my god, I can't even speak. LCC Chair Mike Schwinn sent us regarding chapter two fifty of the ordinance regarding subdivisions. He's essentially proposed removing traditional and cluster altogether so that only conservation remains. That had been mentioned at some point, having stronger language on conservation subdivision provided us with kind of a rough draft of ideas. Wondering if anybody has interest in discussing and researching that any further to strengthen our language on conservation subdivisions.
I would be intrigued. Bob, Mike?
We gotta meet. Let me know when.
Okay.
Councilor Thorson, would you, would you like to schedule something for next week, Monday or Tuesday?
I'm on vacation.
Oh, okay.
Down the street at my house, but and it's also a kid's birthday.
The following week, would that be okay?
Yeah.
Monday or Tuesday is a kid's birthday?
I don't, I knew, well, I knew Wednesdays were, I knew Wednesdays weren't good.
I'll cut it long, a few days.
The first weekend, week of December is pretty bad. Yeah, the tenth would work, tenth or eleventh of December, Wednesday or Thursday.
We can, we can shoot for the tenth.
Okay, let's do it. Like, five thirty? Can you guys do five thirty? You want to six, Bob, or is it okay?
Any day is good.
Three sixty, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, Councilor Vale.
Okay, we are doing it for five thirty P M on Wednesday, the tenth.
Thank you. And we have a couple, additionally, we have personnel ordinance, we can bring that in and we have another, maybe one, one or two other items that we'll we'll pull in.
Do you want to talk about the roads? Public, private, private roads.
Do you want to talk about the roads, Bob?
We can bring the road ordinance.
Roads.
I absolutely do, but I think a conversation at council level first and you're talking about a workshop. Maybe we can cover both those items next meeting. I think it's a preliminary conversation for full council input on that.
I'm so sorry to say this, but you will be two counselors short at your next meeting and I would really, really like to be at the road workshop. Councilor Douglas is traveling to Florida, sorry to out you, and I'm traveling to Texas, so could we push the road to January? Please?
Then we got CIP.
But I think that you maybe I'll pull a couple of those together because it also is, there's road, road planning as well, so we could probably kind of dovetail those two.
Yeah, that's true.
Just just as a thought.
We have the eighth and the twenty-second of December. Which date are you guys gonna be going?
Uh, the eight, the first meeting.
The eighth.
Right, the eighth or something like.
And we already have a workshop on the twenty-second, okay.
Do we have any additional roads coming up soon?
No.
Okay, so we could also do, we could do this, we could schedule it for.
For never, Bob. I'm just kidding.
No, I, no, I think it's really important. I really want to have this workshop.
Yeah.
I think it's really important.
If it's helpful, I mean, looking to have the workshop on specific divining way on the eighth to look at that and then the larger conversation could, you could, could flow from that in the following month too.
Alright. We'll let, I'll, and you're, we're gonna record the the eighth, right?
Yes.
That workshop? Okay, so let's, you guys have your workshop on the eighth and I'll tune in and then you can tell me what to do afterwards. And we'll schedule it. Does that work for everybody?
Yep.
Okay, cool beans.
So are you done?
Oh, yeah.
In response to your quest about Mike Schwinn's conservation subdivision, I think that's a very important discussion to have and it's, there's some important things to consider there. And one of the things is called, you know, hardship waivers and, you know. By and large, that doesn't pass the straight face test because it's, whose hardship is it? Is it the hardship of the towns or the hardship of a developer? And so it's when we we have the ability or a planable one has the ability or somebody has the ability to grant a waiver. I think that's, that's really the crux of the question is, is, and, you know, conservation subdivision, I think, is a, is an important step for the community and and it's what we want to take action on soon because of eighteen twenty-nine, the stuff that's coming down the road. And and it really, some of that ties into with our conversations about roads and so how many more dead-end roads do we need in this town and and how does that fit in with our our land development? There's a whole host of different issues that come up and one of it is contiguous of contiguous landmass and try to maintain that for as much as we can, so that's all I got.
Yes, sir. Councilor Douglas?
A couple of things. This tick outed me. Will not be at the next meeting. I will be traveling for work, not for, not for pleasure. So we will be bumping the finance meeting to the fifteenth, right, Matt?
Yes, ma'am.
We had a library advisory meeting on the nineteenth last Wednesday, super nice group of people. They did flag that the Friends will be celebrating their fiftieth anniversary, which is super exciting. They fund a lot of the library's programming that we all participate or have participated in. So more to come on that celebration in the coming weeks. Next Tuesday, or not next Tuesday, December ninth, will be the next Coastal Waters Commission meeting, and that's all for me.
Thank you. Councilor McGoon?
The finance committee meeting, do we have a time on that? Because I'm, and I might have this wrong, but I have the CMP having their open house here at five, right? Is that, do I have that?
Yep, in in here, but we could meet over there, thinking, we were thinking at five as well.
I don't want to be here.
I think they're, they're gonna be pretty much open for, it's like an open house style from five to seven for the CMP.
Okay, they're not doing like a presentation first and then questions later? It's more of a just, we're here to?
Yeah, I think it's more open house.
Okay.
Similar to the west, west side outreach conversation session.
CMP?
With the transmission line.
Transmission line.
Thing that they're, that that, the vague letter that they might do something to somebody's house or lot, but they won't say what or whose.
Except for Denise.
Those plans may have gotten pushed back with a P O C coming down on them today.
Yeah, they just said, nope.
Yeah.
Go away and give us a different one. So that was supposed to be when? December?
The fifteenth.
At what time?
Five o'clock, five to seven here in Chambers.
I didn't have that here, my thing.
On December third, the LCC has a meeting, so that's next Wednesday, not in two days from now, but next week at seven o'clock here in Chambers. Jeff already beat me to the punch with the joint standing committee. The discussion about the OCS zone just sort of brought to a fore that if we enter any, into any contract zone agreements, like they have long-term impacts and, you know, benefits, but also tie our hands in other ways. And I think we'd need to be just really careful of what that's gonna do, you know, however many years down the few, down the line to things and, you know, turning, it seems like that one sort of turns a commercial zone into a residential zone by default as well. Eighteen, eighteen twenty-nine notwithstanding, that's, you know, still does a lot at all. So I just think we just need to be, as a council, aware of the long-term implications of that. And then with eighteen twenty-nine. Is the state, and I'm guessing the answer is no, but is the state looking at any way for, to help towns with sewer? You know, because it's already on sewer, but not hooked up, and then we're adding potentially tens, hundreds of units. We're gonna reach capacity a lot sooner than we'd planned for and sort of, you know, that will throw our finances into a mess. It'll throw other towns' finances into a mess and sort of, do we have any ability to sort of dictate or throttle anything based on the fact that, you know, at a certain point, the sewer is gonna be overloaded, which nobody wants?
I think it's gonna be a long-term discussion. I know there's capacity that they have, because our Cumberland waste primarily goes to Falmouth. And there, there is a planned expansion of their facility that they have that I think will buy quite a bit of growth that's allocated across, across the area that we have, you know, with Cumberland and Falmouth. So I don't know if it'll be.
Is that part of the CIP discussion that we'll be having, like sort of, you know, that planned expansion, you know, I'm guessing it's not next year?
No, it's gonna, it's probably like five, five years out, but there's other Portland Water District, and you're gonna hear all this again next month as well because we're gonna be bringing forward a public hearing on increasing the rates for sewer because there's a lot of capital planning coming here in Cumberland from either Portland Water District or Falmouth that needs to be funded, that there's, you know, right now it's been holding okay, but there's a structural gap between now and by the end of that, that needs to be paid for by the rate, rate payer. So we'll have probably the next three years, you're looking at rate increases that'll take place because it's not paid for by the taxpayers, it's paid for by the users and users of the of the system, so. But, yeah, there's a, there's a lot out there. You've got aging infrastructure, you know, there's a pump station on Tuttle Road that's, you know, there's a two-phase plan there that you'll see. That's about, I think it's about three million dollars worth of improvements to fix that. It's about fif, well, fix it, it's just planned replacement, it's about fifty years old. The most recent work was done about twenty-five or thirty years ago, so that all needs to be replaced. So they're a little bit more aggressive now because I think they, or they have a lot of things that are are coming due within the next five years, so. But if you, yeah, I think if, I mean, have to wait and see as far as as what their volume's gonna be because, you know, Cumberland will have it, Falmouth will also, you know, none of us are exempt from L D eighteen twenty-nine. So Falmouth will also have to be planning that so that maybe, you know, they're the larger user of the facility than we are, but we own a certain amount of capacity there, so we need to be cognizant of that.
Yeah, and I think make sure that we've got our, you know, proverbial stake in the ground and not, we're maintaining our capacity that we we own.
Yeah.
And all, and and we're not getting pushed around.
No, definitely not. I mean, it's contractually there, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah.
So that helps.
Contractually there and, you know, possession is nine-tenths kind of thing.
Now, if there's, there's, I mean, because Gray was looking at having discussions about trying to expand and get into the Portland Water District or get into that sewer and if they wanted, if they wanted to expand it and run it through Cumberland and tie up and go up to Gray Center to do it, but it would have impacted our, you know, had a chance to impact the amount of Cumberland's volume that we could have, so that really wasn't gonna work also financially. It's.
Yeah.
Silly, you know, to to pay for that, so, but we had to have a conversation, that was one of the conversations Chris and I had last month with Portland Water District as well, with Falmouth and and would it incur and so, but I don't think that's, I don't think that's going any further than that one conversation.
Oh, that's it for me.
Councilor Reed?
Uh, just a couple of things, Madam Chair. Jeff mentioned, congratulations to the really high football, back-to-back gold balls. Caleb King and the, the Coach of the Year, Class C. The boys got the Sportsman's Award, so, I mean, that's, just shows what fine young men they are. I, you know, I was listening to all the discussion on the agenda stuff tonight and I don't know what our legislative delegation at the State House was thinking. I mean, just watch what we went through tonight and at no point when it was passed in eighteen twenty-nine did they bother to come down to the local leaders. And shame on them, they didn't represent their community. And we shouldn't be hap, we we do have done a great job on managing and planning our growth. And tonight was like the movie Groundhog Day. All I heard was, you know, we're getting rid of more commercial property, more commercial property. And we've made the mistake down Route One several times, but now it's being mandated on us, so. Last but not least, happy birthday, Matt.
Thanks, buddy.
Appreciate it. Have a good day tomorrow.
Thank you. Looking forward to it. I, I, I won't be in tomorrow. I'm taking a personal day.
Good, good.
No, thank you.
We had a great outreach session for the comprehensive plan in West Cumberland. And we are pulling together, I say we, but Bridgette and her team are pulling together all of the data points, which are gonna be really interesting to see. It's been really cool to watch residents coming and engaging with the comp plan members and really just not only doing the activities, but just having these really open conversations. One of the things, and this goes to the complexity, Andrew, of the of the contract zones, is it's really hard to watch sometimes the residents within the T C D, which there's just such tension with the structure of that zone, and I absolutely understand. which there's just such tension with the structure of that zone. And I absolutely understand, um, you know, that you have a group of, a group of small neighbors and then there's the rest of the town. And you have to kinda find that balance between what's really good for that neighborhood and what's, you know, indicative of the will of the rest of the community. Um, and talking with um someone within the T C D, she and I were just like, man, this sucks. Like, this is so complicated. And she know, like, she was there with me. She's like, this is so hard. This is so complex. Um, but I think at the end of the day, we um all, it, what's been cool about these sessions is that it gives everyone the opportunity to say that out loud uh together and in a more like brainstorming, like how, like, is there a way to figure this out, right? And it feels collaborative and that feels really great. And that really feels like what we're hoping to do with this process of the comp plan. Um, is have a lot of difficult conversations, but still um feel like we are being true to the spirit of why we moved to this town, right? And it's because, you know, we value each other and we respect each other. So, sorry, that was super long-winded. Um, uh, but that, that was that. Um, and then just as we kinda navigate some of the eighteen twenty-nine stuff, and I think it would be really good if maybe we could get Senator Purse uh to come in at some point, because I, batting this around with um the school, the school board chair, but obviously eighteen twenty-nine, it's not, it's gonna affect the school, right? It, it's gonna affect us in terms of EMS, fire, police, you know. Is the state thinking about that? It sounds like they're not really. So how can we get them to think about that and how, or, or what, what are the things that we need to also be thinking about? Um, or are we looking at how we engage with developers and are saying, all right, like, if you're doing this, maybe you have to think about these other things? Or can we put in additional criteria? I don't know what the answer is, but obviously we're all pretty distressed about the changes that these are, that these possibly could make. And maybe it's time to put on our creative hats and figure out and benchmark with other communities about what we can do to either generate more revenue or, you know, uh, get some infrastructure out of projects, like get some water in there. I don't know. Anyway, uh, okay, that's all I have to say. Sorry, that was long-winded. Um, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Happy birthday, Matt. Um, you guys rock. Everyone who's still here rocks. It's ten oh four. Thank you to our town planner, to our director of communications, to our two planning board members who are still here towards the bitter end. You guys are the best. Have a great evening.
Madam Chair, would you like a motion to adjourn?
Oh, sh- what? No. Stay here until Thanksgiving.
So moved.
Sure. Is there a, so move second, anyone? Second. All right, all those in favor? Unanimous Brenda. Thank you, Matt, for keeping me honest.
Just trying to keep the score current.
Be here in the morning.
Oh, yeah. What about electricians?